Back floor, we'll call to order for the April third special meeting.
I'm Freddie. Good Lord, thank you, Lord, for letting us see this community today. But we ask you, Lord, to give us wisdom as we conduct business for the county. Will help us, Lord, to be, Lord, fiscal responsible and have us, Lord, to show our fiduciary responsibility for our citizens and for our departments. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for providing the resources for Gates County. Lord, help us, Lord, Lord, to do everything that we need to do to accommodate the departments as much as we possibly can. Bless the good stories that you have given us. We thank you, Lord, for increase. We thank you, Lord, for such, in Jesus' name, our prayer. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, we are both recording audio and video this morning with our friend Al. We share through a little extension with Hartford County and Gates County. When he speaks, the Al will look at us and zoom in and the Al will turn his or her head, whoever is speaking. And it's important that it's a Gates and Hartford Al because in Matt Lowe's new and expanded role, he covers both Gates and Hartford counties under a memorandum of understanding that is maybe a year, year and a half or more. And so he literally covers a monogram, a lot of territory. Most recently, he's had a significant stream clearing debris removal project and also secured an additional amount of money that we hope to spend and extend the work. And he wears many hats and lives in the Farm Service Bill, the USDA, that's where he's from. So we're trying to keep this informed just to share what your program handles, what your challenges are, what your priorities are, and if there's any significant changes in your budget.
Well, so I might not leave any dashes. He was sitting here, of course, she would be with us today. She's with her family, which is where she should be, but do you typically go through line items or how do you typically?
Well, describe your staff and how you're set up in the office to handle things and maybe talk about your cost share. Works at the farms and landowners.
So typically, I'm also out in the field dealing with one of the landowners and farmers with technical help on drains or to help them aid in farm production, helping landowners meet their objectives on land. That's typically what I'm doing. I also administer cost share programs through the state local law to help implement practices to benefit our quality. As Mr. Sauer stated, I kind of administer, which is run through the county, it's called a string flow rehabilitation assistance program where we're going into these drainage creeks and getting the storm debris out of them. That's carrying on now. We're finished up here. We're awaiting inspection now when it's clear. See what else. As far as Ashley, actually, Freddie, some of y'all may have met her in the past. She is the administrator, usually handling stuff like this. She's also the education coordinator. She goes to the schools here in the county. Put on environmental field day. She coordinates all that. We have sixth grade, sixth grades coming out to the meal. We have resource stations set up. She also administers in the elementary schools a bookmark contest where they have a thing where those children will draw color a bookmark and they're judged and they're awarded through their wins and stuff. She also works with the, I don't know if y'all know her, the coastal, you may remember at school. Where the kids will have a team and compete against other teams. And various soils, forestry, wildlife, aquatics, and current environmental issues. They'll answer questions and compete as a school. I don't know if I've seen the logs that we'll sell.
I guess constantly change was, didn't we set you up in the leasing program for your latest vehicle?
Yes.
So you are in the leasing program.
Yes.
Individual districts, I think there's like two or three districts in the area that is that part of the also authority or site that they drainage. Is that the right term?
The actual drainage districts.
Yeah.
So the drainage districts, they were put in place years and years ago, kind of where the community is, it'll drain. A lot of the farmers that are on board is where they kind of oversee what's going on. As far as Gates County, I know of three. We have the folly ditch, Oz watershed, and there's one in New Orleans that was small.
Do we, so as I gathered, I was talking to somebody about the one in folly, for instance, because I saw they did work on their recent try to keep it clean. I mean, very, that looks like it's getting kind of rough again, but I think my wrong, maybe a lever, that they talked about somehow that there's the ability for them to tax independently to get the cost needed to.
I think it's a prior charge.
Is.
Is that countywide or just within that district?
If the land benefits from the drainage of the watershed, there's a tax assessment that was done years and years ago. And it's, I think it's maybe even prorated out. It's not, it may get to like a threshold where if this land's well or the water actually goes to these folly ditches or watersheds, it's just a flat rate, but as you get closer to it, I think it may tend to raise.
But they have a separate board and they set those rates and they communicate that to the tax laws. So Tamara will then add those fees to their appropriate.
So that's totally independent of any of our responsibilities. It's independent of y'all as well, but y'all are like included in it.
So as far as like the maintenance and technical help, as far as like surveying and overseeing jobs and stuff, it's kind of where I would fall into play. As far as setting tax assessments and all that, I'd be with the board.
It would be helpful to have one of those tax district boards or all of them come and make a presentation and maybe we could arrange that just to.
I guess the purpose is.
Informing everybody.
Yeah, just because I get, somebody asked me a question. I had no idea they existed. I've been in the county in forty years, didn't know they existed. And John was explaining it to me to some extent and I thought, wow, I had no idea this was the case. And the person was pretty, I mean, they're pretty responsible. They were saying, look, we don't want to end up asking for additional, you know, tax money and hitting people that might not even realize they're benefiting from this. And I'm just thinking, it might be worthwhile for everybody to know because it's not intentionally a secret. I don't think, I think it's just a matter of, he says, put in place a long time ago. And if there is a cost, definitely a cost for maintaining those waterways, it's something pretty darn big when it comes, you know, heavy grain town, moving the water, peaking, it opens, corrupts. But I mean, if they're not within our realm of authority, my.
Assistant tax office.
That's what you say, offer the opportunity if they'd like to come.
I really think they would.
Yeah, but it's, I think it should be, it's gonna be us pushing them. It should be us offering that, hey, you wanna come? So sort of tell a story for people that really don't know. For its work.
Yeah, and as far as your religion, if you have, do you want to run through it and then impossible to email it at some point later to the council? Just if you look at her, if you're talking about like a sign on what you have there.
We can obviously, y'all have had the same news.
We have not.
And I haven't looked at it in, it was very early stage, just trying to get everybody familiar with the agencies and how you operate. Have you got any major changes?
It's all pretty much the same. I think one of the things was we talked about cell phone, this is my personal phone, me being able to deal with a lot. It's constantly ringing, going off.
And if that's something that y'all want to have a county provided fund, we can certainly budget for that. IT has found a really reasonable plan and they're kind of heading duty like foot funds and folks in the utilities department have those. So they don't drop their personal fund into a ditch somewhere and move it. So they're extremely cheap. Or something you'd be able to add an extra.
The main thing is, I don't mind calling this, but some, some people, weekends, nights, it doesn't matter. It's constantly ringing and oh, like cut off.
Just let us know when you have.
And I think that was added. This proposal. Yeah, three twenty-one.
Yeah.
Seven to employees on the top.
So we're conservation issues, which is being asked.
You're board five member through.
We are in the same division as the Farm Service Agency and also Natural Resource Conservation Centers, which are both federal employees agencies.
Any other questions there?
I can ask you one more. Since you worked with her, I think it's good to cooperate. We're just trying to share resources. How much of your time is spent there versus here? They're slightly bigger than us, more developed.
Here lately, I'm seeing like I'm in hurt a lot. You talk about the drainage districts and have, there's one over there that's just sixty-five miles and it hadn't really been maintained in the last seven years. So I'm playing catch up over there.
But it's not, I mean, you're with two of y'all covering the two counties. You've not stressed with it too much for two people or. You don't have, I mean, there's highs and lows in all work, in all this. I guess when I say that, I have times where they were stressed in what we take in this case.
There's periods where it's, it's a lot.
And I think they have an administrative person over there as well. And when this initiative came forth, they presented a package that adjusted his compensation commensurate with the extra due to him. So he's, and we'll have to just monitor that. Maybe a reasonable number, it may not. We're really early in this exercise.
Yeah, you feel like this, this time of year and the around August, September is where we usually get our cost share allocation. So I'm trying to put together contracts and rank them out and award contracts to people. And I'm doing that with two counties as well as getting more contractors up for the four shit rules.
So I'm not, I'm never asking for increases in spending money, but at the same time, trying to be fair to everybody. A couple other departments have come in and said, hey, here's what some of our competing neighbors of comparable work are paying their staff. And if y'all ever look at that, what you're getting paid versus some other district in nearby comparable work.
Okay, we have, we have technicians in Nader County.
Yeah, yes.
You know, we've been doing that years past.
Okay, I'm just saying, it seems like it's, it's fair. We have some doing it to be kind of nice if everybody did it routinely, like at least every other year or so. You take a hard look at what you're being paid, especially a key to something like you, if we think, hey, he's a good guy, we don't want to lose him. We'd hate for you to be maybe poorly, not the right word, but somehow not compensated as well as you are. Could be, especially if it makes you decide to leave.
Better compensation.
Which, yeah, it's kind of unique now because of the two counties. I don't, I don't live differently with the technical assistance that comes from the state of North Carolina.
Thank God, man. It's never a standard of refresh.
Yeah, so the calls I administer cost share programs through state local law, the division soil and water compensates counting for me. Which I hadn't done in this year because we hadn't got a match agreement, but I talked yesterday and sent all my four little reports up, three quarters. So the county can get their money once this match agreement.
Okay, that's, that's what's good. And so for compensation, some portion of your compensation obviously could be upset by the state. But also, I understand county of herb contributes, but you don't literally get, you don't, but you don't get like two checks or anything.
So I'm a Gates County employee, right, for this.
Okay.
Playing Gates County in my service.
Thank you, sorry, sorry.
No, we've been trying to be competitive and I think several businesses changed here, let us know.
Some people are just more shy. I hated the people before in the past, working day and they're leaving and I'm like, why am I not getting paid? And I'm like, whoa, you haven't heard anything you've been here. We'd love to, you know, consider showing us that, you know, getting compensated well enough. So I hate to lose anyway that's good and people say good things about you guys is what the couple farmers I've talked about say, yeah, you're a really good staff. So I'd hate to see you walk if you feel like that should be my job to sail, but you find out more and more like it's kind of you to keep people informed of whether you're being treated well enough.
Right now, I'm pretty satisfied. I miss a lot of work, but two counties. Yes, Gates County will love you too, coming home ready.
Um, which I think is a plus for you to me, you know, the area, the one, and you have your family and all that, that sort of thing. But to his point, like just make sure the compensation is fair and.
You can't, I'm not saying coming here, we're gonna be a good fifty percent pay for you, but at the same time, if you're way below somebody else, I think we should try and address that.
Nobody having coming out, I guess we will say thank you.
As far as this. I don't know, I have an electronic copy of it, but actually may have to use that work.
Yeah, just talk to.
I mean, yeah, that's fine. Whenever is fine. If it needs to wait until she gets back, that's something to come on. Yeah, just that at some point we have it, it's profitable together.
We might email what she turned in.
Yes, that's, that would be what I.
I can do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought they had all seen that.
That's fine.
We're all, we're actually, it's like it's more often by the way, it's like I guess each year and different.
Yeah, usually I just sit here and we don't move. We just don't.
You should face to face time with each department.
There's, there's a lot I'm probably leaving out. TRC or planning department, our new lots and stuff.
Oh, really?
One thing I would tell them.
Yeah, so. Awesome.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you.
And you're welcome to wherever. Thank you all. I had to mention the Al, or we're just recording video and audio. So as you describe to us, as you talk, it will move the little camera lens and zoom in to whoever's speaking. And we'll post it online later for viewing. And I will kind of introduce your county manager if he has any needs or wanted to.
This is apparently a simple apartment. It's got very limited staff. There is a cycle of fluctuation in the budget when they have primary, general elections, sometimes a second primary. I think for the current update, we should turn it over to Chairman Easton and make sure we know everybody around him.
Okay, over here is board, one of the board members, Caroline Taylor. This is board member, Colleen Borg. And this is Miss Christie Gaskin. She is a part timer at the Board of Directors and we're hoping to get her on. And I think everybody knows that this class here is moving on to another area. So right now she is holding down the Board of Directors. Of course, I'm Chris Easton and we're here at the pleasure of you to discuss this.
Do you know everyone? Have you met?
So anybody have a question? First of all, I think you say, I'm going to thank this guest and since she has come aboard, you know, it really has enlightened us to the amount of work that happens at the Board of Directors. And she has been proactive in having to give access that a temporary person will not have, a part timer person will not have. In order to do the work that's going on, so we really appreciate this. And so, are there any questions, love?
But how many employees do you have?
Right now, she's the only one with a part timer.
One position, that's all you have?
That's all we have right now. We're hoping, right, we're holding the hound full time. And after talking to Ms. Peel and Brett T and the Chair and Pastor Tate County, we realize it's a lot more work than you thought it was. This guest will tell you that. I know this, I had a think county, maybe like a hundred people more than we do, but they pay way more. And I talked to the Chair and Pastor Tate. They lost their director and their deputy. And they said they had to go up on the Saturday, although they keep some money. It's one of the part timers we had, it's Robin, actually got the job, the appointments got. So it's a big turnaround. Next is not what it used to be. It used to just be more like a county thing. Now it's more state involved and it's a change all the time. With more training involved, more people involved. And we discussed, I would hope that we could get two full timers because a temporary doesn't have the access that you need to have if they're on full time or not available or whatever.
So if you have, she's part time, but the vacancy is full time. So you had one full time, one part time currently. And one two per full time.
Right.
And away with the part time. You want one of the director and then one of the staff.
Yeah, we want the rest staff and we live in a part time, just in case, especially unless it's time for other stuff. We might have to do more work, but the part timer only be, wouldn't be.
Okay, so you want to keep what you have and add an additional.
Right, right.
Apparently we can employ five, five on part time ways, but they can't, they can't even go that, that. But if they don't stick with it, you're more tardily or whatever, then those jobs can't be filled.
So that second position that you see in other indirect, is that the direct going to.
So I know fluctuation, depending on election year, what election you have to handle, but you also have a host of part time people, right? It just during the actual election time, right?
Full workers are considered the part time workers. They've been pulled them in, but the problem we're running into is keeping them. One of our, one of our part times, Robbins, she's now a director, another county deputy director, and she had, what, they come for part time help.
So how many does the, y'all typically, and I know it's a fluctuation, obviously, but I mean, roughly, how many people?
We basically just said that rather than what's a part time.
Usually it's one or two part times with maybe a full worker coming in, no extra days.
Oh, I just assumed y'all hired like ten per fold or something during capital election.
Not part time. I think they have Robbins and Christie running everything out. And the problem is we're losing someone with fifteen years of experience and bringing in someone who has to have three years to be certified and has to go through the training. So they'll be going away to conferences and all kinds of things to get their certifications next three years. So a deputy director can be trained kind of alongside them. So one of those leaves, this is not ideal. We have someone who has train experience and access to the system.
For these counties that you showed here or whatever, do all of them, that they're sellers or that's all, assume they're all certified? They've got their certifications?
I don't know if we know that. Those were just given to us by the current administrator staff of each of those counties.
And you can see the camera on the head. What more rest of both? Look at the difference in seller.
Who's that?
Which county?
Just a problem with the part time help. They can do administrative work, but they don't, they don't have to do the law changes. And just this has been a little, this entire package is election laws have been updated. That the directors have to be mayorless and the deputy director will also be, there's not a lot of changes and knowledgeable.
So why, do you want to explain how the part time sellers, what's your business about, nine hundred ninety-nine hours?
Yeah, yeah, part time, fully budgeted, nine hundred ninety-nine hours for this one year.
That's just been the history.
Yeah.
And then precincts were brought in for election days and urban voting, I believe. There could be, I guess dozens of those individuals.
And Christie, you may have a fuller number of the total that we, far as at least, at least twelve, I believe.
About twenty-six.
So I was.
And those are the.
In the system, in the system, they count ones that were not in the system. So there's also the problem with, we have rules and regulations, federal and state. Federally, there's a threshold, the whole worker, if they make one dollar over that threshold, they should be taxed from dollar one. So that's why it's so important to have them in the federal system. That way you can work them as much as you want. Because they're more than likely not going to hit the nine hundred ninety-nine an hour mark on either the primary or the election. But if you give them one dollar over that threshold, they're going to be penalized, they're not going to be happy, and we're going to be penalized. And we're not going to be happy because somebody has to keep up with that and we're not in control of their work schedule.
So how much do they get paid?
That's why the change was second. I was going to say that because our last budget, we asked for the coworkers to get an increase. And that kind of changed a lot of dynamics because now they're making enough to.
They make like fifty dollars an hour. It's a, it's depending on what they work. Like the day of election would be fifty dollars an hour, but one stop, I think is different. I think I have like a three tier thing. And when you put it into the system, you use the code and it pays them whatever hours they worked at that rate. But everything is way over ten dollars. I think it's anywhere from ten to.
Is it ten dollar an hour, the threshold, or is it a cumulative amount that's threshold?
The federal threshold this past year was twenty-three hundred dollars. If they work under twenty-three hundred dollars, we're fine. But if they were twenty-three oh one and they've not been in the system and been taxed. But if they were twenty-three oh one and they've not been in the system and been taxed by payroll security, then we had a problem.
How many did we have go over?
I had to put, it was around fourteen in, and there were seven that went over.
So it is, it's an issue?
It is an issue, because to put it into the system after the fact and get taxed. I had to explain that to poll workers that were not happy about that. It was an issue this year, this past year.
Because we also did not budget for that amount of fine we pay now, because we weren't expecting.
And it was an abnormal year where we had. We had a second primary, a second primary, and all recounts. Yeah, all recounts and things like that. Not at the fault of the board of elections at all, just very unexpected expenses that.
Do y'all have a stance on that, Mr. Easton, is there any, I mean, how do y'all feel about that? I guess I'm looking like it for y'all, if it's your poll workers, and it's a problem for them, y'all have any suggestions? What y'all be looking to do, anything different, or?
Actually, we're going to be under rules and regulations, so we gotta follow them. So I don't know if there's anything we do different unless we try to get more people, but sometimes they just don't, they're not available.
I guess what I wondered is, well, I guess I was trying to lead you, selling your attorney or something, but if some people are going to pay taxes out of it, and they reached that limit, then they want to say, well, don't just give me one dollar an hour, it's going to end up with me getting thirty dollars less a day or something. Is there a dollar threshold that ends up making it a net wash for those that do go over? It's a, I mean, honestly, unless I'm wrong, some problems compared to the full-time employee, potentially two full-time employees, the cost for that in most years is going to not be a significant difference, is it? I mean.
What they know with full time, they know they're going to be taxed off the day anyway, so that issue is all.
The full-time, yeah, that's.
Right, yeah. But I don't know, I know the board that issue, like you say, having the system and taxing them to get them.
I mean, that's the best way to handle the poll.
That's the best way to go. If the poll workers that are not in payroll system, after they reach six hundred dollars, then it's reported to the federal government, they have to pay taxes on it.
Exactly.
And if I got eighteen hundred dollars and then the government says, hey, you owe me five hundred dollars in taxes, man, I'm not happy.
Yeah, that's, that's actually right.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, it's actually just the best way to go in the fall. You know, they don't, not agree with it, then just try to manage through people who don't want to be in the system.
And the only way is somebody says, no, I don't want to go into the payroll system, because I don't want my money taxed. As long as you only scheduled that poll worker just on election day, and they don't work any other days, like election day on the primary and the election day on the election, then more than likely they're going to stay under the six hundred dollars, they're not going to be reported, and they're not going to have to pay tax. But that's something you'll have to monitor, and you'll have to make sure that you keep that at that. But if the ones that you, you know, won't work more than that one day, that you can go ahead and put in the payroll system, then you don't have to worry about it.
Right, and that's why one, another reason we're trying to get two full timers. That's just now, this is responsible, this is one person, try to keep up a ball with that, especially the duties of the director. Because that's an easy, you know, slips on one man, and then it's predicament that we gotta try to fix this.
And that's really the call for the commissioners, the way we set up the board approves the additional full-time positions with benefits. And we transition the training requirements, and they've learned that.
This question, this question, operational cost, what was your operational cost last year?
Last year, this is.
Last year, okay, they spent just under two hundred thousand, it was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, it's a change. I think historically, they stayed maybe two twenty, two thirty tops, but it's been right around two hundred thousand.
But I'm reading this right, they were, this is eighteen thousand, two thirteen under the budget amount.
Also, another reason we want to keep a part timer is like, two full timers have to go to training. At least we still have the office coat.
Okay, so in the areas that change our budget for professional services and other, I keep refusing to take my reading classes anymore, so. I'm going to crush through this, because I can't read all of them. But for all other poll workers that opted out of the county's payroll system, including high school students and others that only work election day and assist the election prep, this will cover three elections. That's meaning about thirty poll workers averaging pay a three hundred per election. This also covers building rental, attending the election per site. So that number, because I guess it's now that both people are in the county system, has gone from twenty-six thousand to eighteen thousand seven fifty is what we're proposing to do next year. Because the lineup of those poll workers or any system are shifted to a line. Salary is part-time, there we are. About forty-five percent of poll workers are enrolled in payroll system. This estimate covers pay for those individuals for three elections, municipal primary and second primary. In addition, it covers two part-time office staff with nine hundred ninety-nine hours a year at the rate of sixteen twenty-two an hour. And so that number last year was at forty-two, and it's going to be, goes going up to seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventy.
And in terms of voting machines and computer machines, are you all okay? In your current, we've got all the voting machines we need and.
Yes, I think so.
Yes, and there's a change come out, but right now, it's far.
Departmental supplies, covers cost of ballot selection, carrying voter cards and the waiting for. The equipment, update office furniture, we did that with a little bit of the budget from this year, that's taken care of. New cell phone for the office, cell phone. Office supplies. The standard rollover, these are just a couple of adjustments, and then the additional position request. Yeah, it was pretty standard, a couple of things were adjusted, just because of inflation, like, you know, travel, hotels.
And I think on cell phones, Christie, we have a stipend program if somebody prefers to use their own phone, and we can provide a monthly, I don't recall what that figure was, but if somebody doesn't want to juggle two, two hundred.
It's fifty dollars. And there's a thirty-five dollar one that has some right here.
And I think that comes as a separate check, so the group taxes taken out of that.
But this, this is only paycheck, but it's, but it's separately, it's a line item, so that it doesn't necessarily pay.
So period of employee.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I was trying to.
I knew you were doing something.
I had my, if I look at, you know, here, I have the others, and one here, Washington, and the others, I was going to travel, but I probably.
Yeah, I think this was more. Yeah. I do see Cammy, but knowing Cam is in a different place, this league, we are, from a teacher one on the scale, which are also similar in size.
We need some more furniture, we just got a table, but this is shorter than this, so that's not going to be sufficient for a table. Most of like this might work, we got one saying about four feet, five feet of this, that's not sufficient for an election. And then we got all those little blue chairs, the papers somewhere, there's a break, and people falling out of them. We don't need that, we need to get rid of all of them.
Are those all being recorded with the budget, or do we need to look at those?
Well, we have, looking at it, we may need to look at the, I saw a nice stable on Amazon, it's a four hundred dollar. Yeah, we need to update the equipment, we don't want nobody getting hurt out there. All the chair, I don't know how long we've been around, I think the fact of the chat.
Can I have a question, will there be the right of command, possibly a deputy? Will there be additional money needed in travel and registration?
Well, yes, we'll call it what happens, if we get two full timers, we're going to have. These like six people, they're a board member.
Is the state giving you any guidance on the timeline for having a new person?
Um, we've already made a resume, so we just plan to pay it off all of the days and tomorrow.
So for travel, cut here, estimated four thousand dollars for just for the director and deputies, the things, the director and the full-time staff is what my paper said. Covers two conferences, two district meetings, and then election travel. Conference estimate, three fifty for the hotel, two fifty for mileage, district meeting, hours, one twenty five for meeting, and other thousand dollar cushion, yeah, cushion money.
Anything stands to.
Yes, that's for the director at full time.
Well, for the commissioners, if there's consensus or support that we need to be building in to the budget, an additional full-time position or elevating the part-time line to a, we just.
I'm not the one to say consensus, I mean, we're just talking in general.
We can hand out this all for that for y'all to look at.
Yeah, I think it needs to absolutely be something that shows the numbers, what you get, that effect is.
I agree. And just to clarify, again, as I said earlier, the request for the full-time is to justify because of the certifications. It would need to be a full-time person to have that certification, to be able to have access to certain systems, so that the office was always accessible.
Yes.
And so she just got access, because the thing that she couldn't do, that needs to be done now.
Okay.
There are what is certainly not called, something has to be.
Yeah, like right now, May eighteenth, I have, right now, I'm working on it, I have to go back in twenty, all the counties, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, we have to go in and all the desks, we have to make sure that everybody that is there is out of the system. So, and they changed, the state changed the way that we were doing it, so I did not have access. No, if nobody had access, they changed it, but they have given us that access, so that's why I'm working on rest of this week and next week to complete it, to make sure that it's done. And then we are, April fifteenth, we have more cars coming out, so when the cars are coming back in, it can, it would be a lot, this a lot. Because the other day when I left, because I had to keep walking back and forth to go to the front to scan the cars. And so when I left that day, I had eighty-five hundred steps, because every time I have a car, I can have to walk up front to just scan and go back to the office, go back in my office, you gotta go back up there to get your own, and then the other, like, they gotta turn out. So it's, it's a lot, but it can be done.
It makes you healthy.
Yes.
And you, what was the four hundred?
I think I had three hundred cars.
So, I mean, I'd like to see, I guess I'm just the only one asking, but when we actually see something, do you want the current, or assuming you made it to higher, you know, if they're, got their certification or not, what their starting salary is, and then what the proposed salary would be for a deputy that you're requesting? What their starting salary being, if there'd be any kind of change, if and when they got their certification? And what I'm asking is, is it a two-tiered system?
Right.
You hire, and then your certification gets another level, or you just hire them at full salary, whether they're certified or not? That'd be kind of what I'd like to know.
I would like to see the two-tiered, I like to see you have a style, style, once they get certified, they get an increase.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, but I mean, I just, I'd like to see that when we get certified, so we know.
You said it takes three years for a certification?
Just for reference, Gates County currently work with our director, forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-one, with fifteen years of experience, Chawan County is at forty-seven, with seven years of experience. For Quinnes is a forty-six, six hundred and sixty-two, for two years of experience, and that's not certified. So just, I think that our increase that we're asking for, just for the director, was less than nine percent of an increase, because we do need to be competitive with these positions, they're leaving left and right.
So my question, I mean.
People are retiring too.
Again, we talked earlier about fair compensation kind of stuff, but looking at that, if we are bringing somebody in uncertified, the level that we're at is fair compensation, it isn't going to be a person with fifteen years' experience, this is a person coming in new. Which makes our salary that is being offered meet competitive, looking at somebody in Chawan leaving two thousand dollars more with seven years' experience and certification.
We're basically going to pay them and then pay to train them, and then compensate them.
And then compensate them when they get their certifications. So at this point in the game, it seems like a fair level of compensation, I think, in my opinion. Because we are considering, she had fifteen years, the person coming in does not.
Chawan is forty-seven, the number is a lot, but I don't think it has the two tiers this one.
But still, you know, pick it up for them, seven years.
Talking to other counties, Apple Pay had two to quit, the deputy and the director. And they went up on Saturday.
And I'm going to be totally, in my opinion, they are not comfortable, we can't even.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, that's a fact.
Yeah.
Try to keep somebody, I know we can't compare, we don't have the resources that the types of thing have.
And, or the resources, and I understand the comparison, the Camden saying, hey, Camden's better, same general size, but Camden also has, is in a different fiscal place as well. And if it was somebody with experience coming in, I would think a discussion about salary at the time that they were hired would be, would be valuable, but as standing, if it's somebody new that we have to pay for certification for, I think the compensation here works there, in my opinion.
Compared to Hertford, we have basically the same staff positions, a director, they had just acquired, that was a full-time, they have one part-time, those reading wise, and, but their director's making fifty-eight, and a much bigger voter over in my days too. But, so there, but that director has to do all of that organization, that's why she's getting fifty-eight. So it's either or, and then you still have that problem with the office not being able to be managed if we don't have that full time. But that's.
Well, yes, and my question isn't about the additional full-time position, it's talking about the salary for the director with needing certification. That's definitely, I'm not, I understand the request for another full-time position, that's not at all my question. It was just this request for, or suggestion there for the salary increase.
It just falls as close, that's all, falls as close to being fair.
Yeah.
What would, what would be a comparable entry level traditionally for a director, or departmental director, for other departments?
Look every year.
In the same grade as, as the elections?
Nothing comparable for department.
Is there another department?
The hiring rate, the hiring rate for an elections director is thirty-nine, eight, sixty. But that's for your first six months probationary period, then.
But that's for zero experience.
Yeah. And then at the end of the six-month period, the minimum is fully one, eight, fifty-six. So that's everybody that's in that grade.
Yeah, I think the max goes, in that pay grade level, the max is.
Yeah, I think the max goes, I think that paper is level, the max is probably sixty one, sixty one by the way.
Yes, sixty one, seven eighty eight. And that's, that's even the social worker, two positions in the D S F coming.
He said minimum is forty one and.
After six months.
Yeah, after six months.
And the max is sixty one.
Sixty one is after.
Is there other department heads? I think it's what you were asking.
The social worker.
It's a department head? That's what she was asking, the other department heads.
There's not any directors at sixty seven.
But we have the only close comparable salary is the library director, but that's part of a regional system and and that position's at either forty four, forty five thousand.
Planning, planning has what four employees has slightly bigger, but with planning director position.
It's.
That's a much different burden.
Yeah, it's seventy nine thousand somewhere in range.
That's economic director is a great seventy eight, but how are you sixty two?
There's a good reason the board elections has made their decision if they want a higher salary and then say after six months. Look at an adjustment for, we normally would do five percent, but I think there can be. A combination is made for, if if the board elections has the person they want, I think we ought to try to have support of this. And we need, when the individual gets a particular level of certification, add another percentage to that. A lot of, a lot of flexibility there. If they have found a person, anything we can do to help, we ought to.
I'm trying a lot of this guy.
I have one more question. I know benefits really can't do anything because we got to work on salaries. But line out one seventy one, board members for dealing in travel. Maybe work up some numbers to that and kind of get an idea of what you're about to put on next year. Thought we got a little talk.
Or not a member for them to travel?
Yeah.
The nineteen seventy? This line covers the cost of any travel expenses and meetings for five board meetings. Board members are required to attend state conferences for that six months of appointment. Estimated two conferences, conferences estimate about one thousand per member. Additionally, board members receive monetary stipend per meeting at fifty dollars a meeting. An increase is being requested to seventy five a meeting. And the, um, the act of the request for the increase was because it's fifty dollars a meeting. So if we need to just, you know, regular meeting, just do the minutes and, you know. Check the boxes, fifty dollars. But on presidential election, we could be there till midnight and it's still fifty dollars. And if we go on conferences. And the entire day is free days of travel, but we can pay for travel, but it's fifty dollars a day. So with being a conference, we're making about seven dollars an hour. That was the only request for that. Um, I don't have last year's number for my meeting.
I appreciate that information. I'm looking for total.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I see it now. All right, sorry. She put it in the wrong place. That's why I didn't see it. Cause I saw it said increase in meeting for DM from fifty to seventy five and I was thinking, well.
And I will pass here to, I don't mean to rush it, but if we have any last minute questions, because we do have the next, the next one in line coming up here at ten o'clock, we're gonna pass that up. There are any other comments or questions? Okay, thank y'all. Right, um, so moving on to the next item is public utilities and as far as we have to do it, can I answer?
Fortunately, the board has spent a lot of time, you can presume, in the last few weeks and months and. Everybody can appreciate, he's got one more complex set of issues to work with. Um, I think as we look through our final question presentation, there will be any number of strategies and thoughts and. Options for the board to to look at. Could include new staff members looking at. Obviously, he did use regular. He's living in some exciting times.
If you would like to talk for water or sewage.
How many nine boys you have?
There, well, eight including myself.
Eight off the time?
Yes.
I mean, those are.
Seven field and one off. What's, excuse me, six field, two off, myself and.
He's not really off, but she might.
Yeah, I'm kind of field more or less.
Um, I mean, whatever you have, is there water or sewage every conference or?
I'll start with water. Based that, I've, you know, really not questioned a whole lot other, you know, just, uh, percentage increases that I have. Um. Um, I am requesting a four inch five inch pump.
So where do you tie that from?
Yes, ma'am. And I said the cost of. Yeah, I put fifty thousand in there. It's like forty seven.
I don't know the technical word thing.
You can use it for water or sewage amount. You can use it to pump out like holes if you have like a bad water leak, but you can also hook it to a pump station and bypass the pump station and still do it. Anything related to pump station.
Okay.
Y'all have any of those now?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, you really need one, yeah. That's a real need. That's a real need, yeah. I've got sixteen, sixteen of them.
Okay.
Um, and the rest, as far as water goes, it's just, um, software, they want software contracts and, um. Little repairs, putting light under the shed at the water plant and fixing the rock river to get new S B R plant.
Okay.
Um, the rest is just, uh, twenty percent increase, you'll allow, just to cover any increase in price or.
Or the entry may or may not, religion, I'm just curious, um, as I know. May want to feel like that's been a step. Um, are, have you been told of any expected increase due to these tariffs coming in that in April second?
Anything that's emailed sent out, not specifically stated, the words that'd be in it, but the potential to that increase, yes.
Okay, specifically because of that on top of customer.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, I don't know that twenty percent.
Well, brass just went up fifteen percent like two months ago, um. Um, and they're making a lot of like, uh, powder things to kind of offset the costs, plus they're more readily available. I'm not really, I've been using some of the powder, that's all I'm getting paid on is not really sold on it as far as longevity of it, have have a hold up. But so far, we haven't had any issue.
So. Y'all guys normally they're anticipating a price increase, a lineup increase, but twenty seven percent does seem big, but at the same time, there are some issues. But y'all guys will actually give them actually expenditures, right? He can look at a lineup expenditure before the year. So when you come forward. It's like I said, there had been a fifteen percent increase in brass, but halfway through the year, then you could assume that part lineup would be pretty close, made a little bit more. But the other expenditures, they should be climbing, but twenty percent seems like a big jump.
It is.
So looking at the current expenditures in the year should be a, a kind of a good gauge of how much you would need to increase versus just packing on.
It'd be a lot more testing as as we try to track our, our full run situation. And again, we've.
So like a toy boss, I'd give that, yeah, but that's one I got.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I guess Mr. Robinson would verify, I'm negative in a lot of my line items. Yeah, well, according to that, the departmental suppliers that he approached in that trip, one seven thousand, he's already up to one eleven.
That's a good, that's a good point. If you show that you're a hundred twenty percent over the line, I'm saying, I'm willing to suck it up. I think that's what Mr. Rampe is implying, we're willing to suck it up. But there's twenty percent across every one of them seems a little harder to swallow.
Well, I think they're twenty on every one of them, uh, a lot of, a lot of like the departmental supplies, the, um.
So it was a selected.
Test and, yeah, the testing and stuff like that.
Selected and more palatable than across the board.
I think maybe twenty percent.
Well, that's a planning thing. We're really, really early. Uh, chances are on the sixteenth, when we will be bringing some capital, immediate capital request to pull out of his utility fund. Uh, the year ended with right at three point two million dollars in the utility fund. It's up over last year. But as he's looking at the wells and the pumps, and there's maybe some, based on some results he's getting, there may be some, uh, pump upgrades. That we can employ and really generate some, some positive results for the board.
So I have a, and you may not have this right offhand, because maybe, I don't know, not where your head's at at the moment, but, um, replace all these water meters that we're doing like kind of thing there. Are we seeing any increase on? What we're taking in revenue?
I think we had an increase of six. Six hundred and something.
You have to, oh, oh, there's old manual meters, they get less ones there.
But I mean, but I think that's important when we're considering, but if we're bringing in more, we're collecting more money, we're losing less water, hopefully, as we have been in the past, that hopefully this is gonna help. When we're looking at the overall number.
We're another vision.
Because I mean, I I know most places, the ideas of the water. That we're selling pretty much takes care of the expenses for that department in most places. It should be run like a business, because it's a business.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess my question was, are we seeing some of that reflected?
We are, yes, we are seeing the increase in the line.
Good deal.
So, and I I'm going along with what what Mr. Truman's saying is that. You, you know, if you're showing that additional revenue, it's more palatable than that effect is, is that your enterprise fine in the end, if you're three point two million to the good this year. If you target something, this is a net zero.
Well, we didn't make three point two million, just that's, we now have a fund balance.
Okay, so if we netted a hundred thousand even last year and you now got increased revenue, increased expenses are kind of understanding.
Right.
That's what I would think in confidence with the show, let's say, here's the facts, bigger expenditures, more revenue, as you pointed out, here's where we think we're going.
Yeah, I think that's important to present to when we're coming to the formal presentation of the budget in the future, to point out that this change in.
How frequently do you have to do a rate study?
I I think in.
I thought it's like every four or five years or something.
I think Julie recommended every five years.
When was that?
Well, we'll have a rate study, both water and sewer is part of your A I.
Okay.
Yes.
Part of that, okay. So what, what, when's the A I need to be finished?
December this year. I believe, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I was thinking December of this year.
So that's an important point. So we're no way, shape, or form do we anticipate needing to adjust the rates when I'm trying to get this year? And so, yeah, for me is if you're balancing books effectively like the working capital fund, they talked about the C store, Europe, enterprise. And at the end of the year, if you're saying, yeah, we're gonna increase these costs, as we expect to, but we've got this extra revenue viewpoint, to me, then that effect is.
Justifiable.
We're good, we're good. If we're going to see an increase, that's good. Yeah, okay.
I think Claire too, on the line, I'm very glad it won't be a fair price.
Yeah, I agree. That that sounds a lot better. Um, so yeah, I think.
Well, I I want to base one more with the bypass pump. So I'm assuming you're going to buy a gas pump or something, the gas repair.
That's what, that's what I want to get the gas.
Yeah, because I was, that's personal preference. This is maybe when you show the gas that others, I bought, maybe you say goodbye on one, foreign made one and getting it repaired, because you willing to add repair. Getting it repaired was a nightmare and effectively it was no good to us for three months. I I'm not complaining, but the local gas, they service everybody. If you get a problem, they come and fix it. And you can't actually lease them, those gases, you get them refined.
Yes, you can, you can, yeah. I believe so.
And you can do it month to month, yeah, even per month if you're in the Bay of State. Yeah, that's okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, if you have any need on water, you know, if you want to go to the sewer, we can do that.
That, that's the one on water, um. Uh, with sewer, um. I increased maintenance repair equipment and that was, um. We really know we're going to replace this sprayhead. I don't know if that was due to. If being built six years ago and it's sitting and PVC pipes are just degraded, you know, maybe with sprayheads and stuff popping off. So I did increase that line due to that. Um, and we have bought some additional equipment, um, some, uh, three D turn motors and everything there, they're going to require maintenance. So I went up five thousand dollars from that line.
Are you gonna house those things up there?
Yes.
You're already building equipment?
Yep, they're finishing up, uh, Rad Roundtree's finishing up, putting rock down the deck. Um. Electricity, I went up twenty percent on electricity. That was only because the demand went up fifteen percent on their rates. Um, I don't know if they're going up anymore or not, quickly not, but. Uh, and departmental supplies, I went from fifteen thousand to twenty five thousand and that's to rerock the driveway, put in, um, drain pipes throughout the driveway and spray fields. Um. And that was around about the price off of, uh, you know, a couple of people said, they said it would be about ten thousand, so I just decreased that by ten thousand.
In the current year, he has some pretty significant, uh, capital outland. I just saw it for the first time. You're describing your building at the S B R facility, the metal building.
Yes, I had a metal building, which the budget the last year, um, I had it put up. It's about seventy five thousand dollars. It's a three day building that's got one end that's, uh. Will be for like office slash lab, because we're gonna have to do some additional testing, um. That's also another, another part of the, uh, departmental supply that we're gonna have to buy, uh, dissolved oxygen, essential pH meter, you know, all things like that.
That's all in that ten thousand?
Yeah, that, yeah, all that, I just wanted all the gas.
It'd be worth driving out there, letting him show it to you. It'd be a nice prototype for an ambulance base, actually, maybe even oversized for an ambulance base.
We can, I'm I'm doing.
Well, the rest of us.
And he did find a local vendor.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Cattleyson.
He built, he built one in town of hers for last year.
Oh, well, it's a brand new, just kidding.
If he was rolling the gun, great work. Rad Roundtree's doing great. Turn two seven.
But it's, you just, you get the concrete slab and shell, what else do you get for seven five, anything else?
That's airplane, land, regular, electrical.
New electrical, okay.
There's power out there.
So I wanna go back.
No bathroom there?
No, no bathroom here. My intention of putting a bathroom out there at some point, but there's no bathroom yet. It's just the woods.
But that's in the sprayfield, right?
Hmm.
So that should be, you have to put a little mass air pump in.
Yeah.
That's right there.
That's it.
Oh, he can, he can.
I'm already about to. I said, it makes no sense, but it's a takeout tool. Pretty much all I have, I mean, I'm.
So did you just hit early on your topic, and and I try to overcome proper conversations here, adding another position?
Yes, I would like to add another position. And that would be more of. Of a, I'm trying to, like a tactical position, more like a low pay position.
And you were looking for a full time?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And you have that worked in, see the.
Yes.
All right.
Question, so for your, so what's your revenue sources for your system? That's one as an enterprise as well. I figured, is there anybody else besides the schools?
No. School, well, schools, uh, gates house and credit union and the community, community center, yeah.
What community does that as well?
Yeah.
And then credit union and high school, middle school.
High school and middle school.
You don't take, do you, or I should, I shouldn't say it like I know. Do you take any outside, any outside haulers?
No.
So any of the guys that operate subject cleanup systems in our county, do you have to haul it somewhere else?
They, they haul it to a hospital.
Is there any consideration about changing that?
I've talked with the state about it, the state is not in agreement, we're into it right now.
We've got the one plant we're doing, the rehab, on the other, that's on the. Four thousand of the SPR.
Forty thousand, yeah, forty.
So that would be, what you were saying would be an additional source of revenue in state allowance?
And we did have more than since.
Okay, I mean.
So the sprayfield, I thought the sprayfield, you said last year was operational now?
With.
The new one?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, where you.
The on, just saying is, is we have haulers right now, collect something tanks, you see all the time, you see people asking about, we need to get hauler from various companies, but all of our haulers.
If, if, if the state is saying, then what would the state require for that to be an option?
It would have to be added in a permanent application, if they agree with you.
But then, it's, but generally it's up to you as the operator, to be due diligence on who comes and how, it'd have to be a local hauler, not just some guy with New Jersey license plate. Put a load.
And it has to be, it has to be strictly household based.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
You don't, you truly don't charge much, I'm just saying if you had a hauler locally. Same.
I think in a hospital, I think it's like a hundred fifty bucks a load, something like that.
But then they're gonna go to a hospital, seriously?
Yeah, they're gonna go to a hospital.
So they probably wouldn't cut people a two hundred dollar rate on cost, but they might cut fifty or seventy-five dollar rate.
Okay, and for me, this is, this is not my field of expertise, so, yeah, I, I take responsibility. Do we have anything further to add? Good for me. Thank you.
I want to say that, something else passed, I'm. Sorry. How many vehicles do you have?
Seven.
Yes, on the road.
Right, okay.
How many like backhoes, knee excavators?
I have one backhoe, one knee excavator, one dump truck, um. And a Warren G.
How old are those, those?
I think, I think the backhoe is a nineteen ninety-two model.
Wow.
But we only, we only use it for loading, loading dump trucks.
Okay, is it in the excavator, it'll work? Oh, it's an excavator?
Thank you. They got it from. They got it from some grant. I think in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Okay, that's.
So it's not, it's, it's only got, uh. About three hundred hours.
Right, it's not like your contractor, you use it constantly, right? What about your dump truck?
Dump truck is a fourteen.
And then your road vehicles, what's your oldest road vehicle?
Oldest road vehicle is a twenty sixteen.
Okay, right. Sounds like the only thing that's really, my, my bad, your backhoe being pretty old. You don't use it that.
It runs great, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All of the vehicles we got, we got last year was a lease car. Yeah, I got three vehicles last year. Oh, I, I was gonna ask for.
Let's see, yeah.
To bring them before, see, I forgot.
Not too late.
That's already because early, right? It's getting catched to the.
I didn't, I didn't. Uh, yeah, I was gonna ask for, I don't have any information on that, I'm relying on him.
So you wanna get all seven, so it'll be on the lead to me?
Right, right.
But the equipment, now you have equipment on the lease, is it?
No, no, we, we only, and all the, all the other, the four vehicles are well over a hundred thousand miles.
Yeah.
We can work that in.
Tweet it to the, to the.
Well, I'll tell you, you go tweet it and send it back to me, so.
I did not have any room for some.
And I think the miss, I had mentioned, there's a lot that happens behind the scenes, especially this meter replacement project. Which has been a challenge, and Brad has mentioned to me, in his career, he's done many meter changing exercises. But apparently in Gates County, it's been more difficult than, than, than usual. Our, our goal is to get us to July one and return to a monthly billing cycle. The bi-monthly billing cycle has, has really been a challenge.
Yeah.
For the customers, uh, because you're often paying for water needs three or four months together, um. It's been a challenge administratively in the, in the finance office. And we are doing a lot of testing and, and quality control work. It's, it's just been a, a tough, tough project. And there are folks, not at this, like, Daffy Walker in the finance office. Does an awful lot of the, the double checking.
It has, it, to put it loosely, it's been a month. It's been a year.
What, what, I gotta ask, what's so hard about it?
There's nothing hard about it. I mean, as far as doing it, it's just the contractor that our supplier hired to do it, to sell it out to, has been the challenge.
That's fair.
And walking off the job and not sending enough.
Leaving and coming back. I mean, they were in the middle of putting their meters here, and they got the job in the ax here, they fooled everybody, went in that shit. Just left us out of it.
And getting the data from the meter, you know, the, the federal number and the serial code, so that we can import it into the, the accounting system, there, there's been a lot of.
You mean when they initialized the meter, when they put it in, this contractor, when they put it in, getting them to do that?
They were, they were, they were messing up. Each meter had an EID and a serial number. They were entering the information wrong. And then they uploaded into admin, their billing system, it just, it blew everything out of, out of whack. And I hadn't been able to get them here to correct it.
So, how many, how far along are we? How many do we have to do?
We need, there's six hundred and eleven meters left to put in the ground, um, and then we have probably. Between eight thousand, eight hundred and a thousand, that, that. Information needs to be corrected.
We're gonna end up doing an individual audit on every meter.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We, I was gonna say, if you were close, I mean, no offense, we, we knew once, because we had, like, we probably replaced twenty, twenty-five a month. And like, if you're paying me that, and collecting that information is not that difficult, I understand what you mean, but as a contractor, maybe with half ass, let's speak my language, we kind of stuck with that, yeah.
And a lot of, a, a lot of people, you know, when you say a meter changer, for a change in the meter in the box at these point. There's nothing to it. It's the IT side on the backside of it is where. The difficulty is in there.
Last one, y'all know, we, we've got people on it, they're working hard. Just, this is, this has been tougher, I think, than any of us, uh, anticipated.
Speaking of, as a citizen, I greatly look forward to the day we go back to the monthly billing cycles. Because if I can tell you guys, the one bill I forget, every single other month. And then I'm like, oh gosh, I don't know, I can't keep track of it, I don't know. I know we get a little bit, it doesn't, it helps my brain.
All the draft is the greatest, I mean.
We have any, any hammer to put on the contractor for it to just take care of it, don't?
Uh, uh.
Do we have to stick with the contractor?
Well, we are mainly with the contractor to do.
I had met with a separate contractor, actually, yesterday, uh, by trying to write our last name up.
Is the guy contracted individually, or is he your, your supplier?
He's not a senior supplier, supplier now. It's G two utilities out of Kensington. Orley Green, I should say. He corrected me, he said, I'm not from Kensington, I'm from Orley Green. Thank you.
And that's the part we're looking to help those.
Yes.
Brad's a busy man, if we can let him out there in this area.
Yeah, I think we can, we can do that, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And yeah, I really appreciate everything you brought for the county team. I tell you, I'll stand in the next one.
And just one of the two of y'all remember to work in those four vehicles.
Yeah.
I said, one of the, one of the two of y'all remember to work in those four leased vehicles.
Well, I was gonna ask you those questions, but did you still notice you paid for about the. Each person you want, um, considered that third person to come in?
No, I haven't.
I can send you something on there, just to write it up.
Okay.
So I can have to present anyone.
Okay.
And we can actually see what. Bad for my quality, yeah.
So, did he decide to do something with a maintenance worker?
And he's. Well, it'll probably be a maintenance worker, it would be listed as a maintenance worker, but I'll utilize him in some of the.
This would not only write some notes, we could. I don't know how many conversations we can have. Okay, okay, Brian.
Dan, you just sent a little note reminding about the reading.
Well, thank you so much.
All right.
I have some, I have a paper for him. He took, he has to touch a round of eyes.
So, we will have a half hour. Great, so you have it back together after the problem utilities, we have to move to our next on the agenda, and we did have your head manager.
Well, thank you, and you're an official welcome, Mr. Brady, with his first present exercise with us. Last year, we really had a crash course in.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna let him know.
Oh, yeah, we are, not while I put the yard recording, but video, you know.
I figured it out.
And when you talk, the camera's gonna turn and look at you.
Okay.
And, and I really want to emphasize, we, we are still. Trying to get ourselves in a groove operationally. Uh, and, and one of the. And this is really not budget, but, but I think this is a, is a great opportunity to inform, is to ensure that we keep our. Facility as presentable and, and, you know, customer friendly and clean and. Uh, it's been brought to my attention a couple of times, and a lot of this predates you, in, in your service into the. Community center, but it's been brought to my attention when there was a position added, uh, for the purpose of being a custodian. That, that position was redirected for other programmatic responsibilities. And I guess you all, as staff, share in the, the custodial duties and. Is this me?
That's close.
Okay.
But not quite.
Okay.
Um, when I got there, it was a, it wasn't a custodian, it was facilities maintenance.
Okay.
If you will, and, um, sort of a. You know, person to the green fields, paint lines. You know, for soccer fields and football fields, and baseball and softball, and all these kinds of things like that, um, that person did do. Some of the cleaning, but the staff that was there before me did other things to, you know, to help in that capacity. Um, to try and capitalize on. The person in that position that was there before I was hired. Um, briefly before I was hired, you know, one or two before me, um. But, you know, a lot of personal training certificates and things of that nature, we. You know, I kind of shifted him into facilities and fitness, and put Connie in more of an administrative, non-traditional programs role with. Some senior related things, youth camp related things. Um, and then, you know, helping me with the administrative.
So can I ask, just out of curiosity, because I, I'm not sure, um. Our custodial staff, do they do anything at the community centers since we took over July one?
No.
No, okay.
So, so how many told you, have been right there?
Six, Tony.
Six, Tony.
And what is the full time part time rate too?
Four to two.
Four to two.
Full to part.
Hmm.
And truly, it's history for all of us.
Right, yeah.
It brought to my attention last year, when the board of commissioners increased funding several years back for the board of education, but. That was modestly requested and approved as a custodial position. And, and when we had a school budget presented to us last year, with the tabs and the glossy pages, and they listed the staff, and it was still listed as a custodian.
So, and, and I would say my big thing is, if we have staff there that is away, like. Job description, like things, things within job description. I'm, I'm totally pro. Staff doing custodial work, I would say that's one of my things, when we had the nine one one center, I was like, you don't need to pay somebody to come in here, we're here downtime, we should be able to empty our trash, clean our bathrooms, do our things, like. That's being efficient, that's using your time wisely, that's, that's putting, I'm feeling there, but if the position was custodial, and that wasn't what they're doing, then I guess that would be the, the concern.
Well, if that's what it was, that's not how it was given to me.
Right.
And, and again, we're all.
Yeah, I, yeah, like I said, I'm.
Getting acquainted.
I'm quite.
We're doing.
Four year, off term stuff, so yeah, I'm still fresh, green, whatever you wanna call it, but. That's, you know, that's not quite.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm totally new, but I don't understand exactly, so before the transition does. What do we, what were we responsible for? Maintenance wise, service, cleanup wise, whatever?
The building itself, um, the immediate grounds around it, everything sort of, you know, cutting the grass, mulching beds, those types of things. Um, the ball fields, you know, dragging, painting, moving goals, all those types of things.
That's what we did before, that's what they, they were staff to do, the school was giving money or recovering.
That's right, and it was under the school supervision.
All right.
And the county funded the community center for recreational program, but it was coordinated all by the school system, so it was just turned over to us.
So was the staff the same about the community center, or was that?
No, there was actually one more part-time staff, and there were three, when I got there for about two weeks, and then. One, one that's no longer there, found out she could go back to the schools, and the cafeteria is, and, um, you know, finish out her retirement in that way, and that, you know, that's fantastic for her. But we were never allowed to finish or build that position, so we were down one almost immediately when I got there. It was about November or December, when she went all back to this.
That was twenty twenty-one.
Right, yes, sir.
Just as we go through these discussions, we'll have, uh, buildings and grounds here after lunch. And, and if it's the board's expectation that some of these responsibilities were the, for, for custodial or, or other maintenance, we transition to the, uh, buildings.
And that's kind of why I was asking that question about, is building the grounds currently doing anything to help with that, because we haven't taken over as a county building.
They've been staffed just to cover the facilities that we had and had recently.
But I do remember, it was earmarked, it was earmarked for custodial, um, last year, and, uh. I'm curious about, I'm also curious about why that was. Rest, right? What's the communication, like, that you don't have knowledge with? It was earmarked for custodial.
And, and my thoughts on that are that. If that was what that position was supposed to, then I don't see how that could be a, you know, forty hour a week.
And that, that's gonna be my next question, is how many hours would you, how many hours would you guess it would take to properly service that building per week?
No more than twenty.
No more than twenty?
No. Four hours a day, five hours a day, I'd say.
Okay.
Because there are other part-time staff that can do those things, like the total paper runs out.
Right.
You know, they're there.
Right.
In the evenings.
Yeah, just talking like the general cleaning, you know, the cleaning of the floors, the general cleaning of the bathrooms, that kind of thing, so you would say four hours a day would be, that's.
Sure, yeah.
So, this came at the last meeting, I mean, it's, it's, per did to budgets on a ramp, I normally wouldn't, I wouldn't mix two, but the last discussion, we're talking ball fields and the agreement, the schools. So I actually understand a little better, if the school is still getting the funding or maintenance of the fields, I can see them maybe taking responsibility. For the ball fields and everything that being transferred, then if they're in fact doing it, and we're spending money, because I just, for some reason, I have in my heart of hearts, you'll say, that they ain't gonna want to give the money back. And if we take it, we build his staff, they're gonna have to do the responsibilities, so we're still gonna be giving them the same amount of money, she's gonna go to something else, because we can't really cut their budget. So, I mean, that's just playing in my head, is, is that staffing him up to do the fields is gonna just result in us paying for two staff to do the same job. That, that's my concern.
Right, right.
So, great.
I appreciate you, I appreciate you writing your, your question, because I'm like, yeah, they're just trying to state what things seem obvious.
Yeah, this is the thing that they started having to talk about.
Sure, so I mean, can I ask that question, as, as you currently function, the, the maintenance out there, um. How word is, is that a task you want to take on, you would want to take on the school, people responsibilities, would you, because they, it seems like they have a host of people involved in fundraisers and et cetera, that take on the financial. that take on the financial responsibility for building the good, I mean, I think that's a nice, much nicer facility like to be yours.
Well, I mean, if you just look at playing fields, I mean, that's, you know, when they're athletic, they're not doing, you know, our facilities person is. I mean, they, they're not gonna come drag them for our games.
Right, right.
We all drag them for their games, you know, we, you know, we don't paint their lines for football games. You know, they don't paint our lines on the outfield for soccer games. You know, there's, I mean, there's a cohesion, if you will, there's a symbiotic, like it works out. But, you know, that's, that's just kinda how it's done, and that's how it's been done, and I would see no need to change it. You know, Robert knows what to do and when to do during the specific seasons and. I will like during football season, we don't have to line anything, it's already in there, but, you know, it's our yard walkers, our trains, our, you know, stuff like that, our pylons, when it's our football games on a, you know, two, maybe the third Saturday of fall, but that's really the only thing, I mean, we don't cut the grass, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the necessary equipment to cut grass.
What do we do that's beneficial then? Because if they're cutting the grass to maintain those things, that's beneficial to the community center, then community obviously, right, so. But what do we do, anything that's beneficial for them, facilitates their, their games and stuff? I guess I'm asking, is there any part of the ancillary that they are required to make care of?
Well, yeah, all the exterior grounds, all the, everything outside fences, I mean, county pays directly to cut that. So, I mean, without that getting done.
Walking trail from the way around.
Oh, everything, yeah. Yeah, the practice, the practice of ball field area, the, you know, the open areas back there, adjacent to the full-size baseball field. But that's all contracted.
Does that contractor cut like a ruley field?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I guess that's the only inside fence.
Yeah. I can still believe always that two years, I remember it was, it did seem different, that one than the others, okay.
Well, it's not sprayed, it's not fertilized, it's not irrigated very well. But matter of fact, I think the only thing that has irrigation is that, that they did that back in the fall for the infield for the full-size baseball field.
Well, I don't think there's anything that we can't work through and find a way to share with the schedule and things. I would like to touch on the fee structure though, about the fees for the, uh, exercise room and see if the board's comfortable, maybe it has is, or possibly.
So I would say, I, I have had conversations with different people in regard to their opinion on these, and I don't know, I haven't, I haven't had the conversation with you, but it was basically given in general with a small fee, they feel like they take better care of the equipment. What was the consensus that I got from general conversations, I'd be curious to see your opinion on that, because I know the county manager and I have a conversation about it, it's a community center, it should just be open and available to the community without a charge.
Yeah, on, on that topic, through networking with some colleagues that I have across the state, people take more ownership than something that they pay for, they're gonna show up for something that they pay a fee to invest in, youth programming, you know, senior activity, whatever the case is, you're gonna get the participation that you're counting on when there's a cost involved. That being said, could the cost be lower? Sure. But I think something to hold their, you know, investment.
And what is it now, ten?
Twenty about twenty.
Twenty dollars?
Yeah.
For, for, for everybody, seniors, everybody.
They give the schedule maybe?
I'm just saying, it's seniors right across the street. Honestly, just for some reason, I feel like, I mean, they will walk right across the street, they gotta pay the fees.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I agree, I completely see the line, it's just, what are you gonna get? You don't know what they're trying, I mean, that's, you know, definitely, you know, offer discussion, offer changes.
If the building is open and somebody is new to the community and wants to go use it, we have to explain why they can't use the machines without paying. I'm just curious, what is our rationale, how do we?
Miss, oh, what's her name, um, Miss Ollie got this spoken last week.
Yeah.
She was describing, I thought, if I recall correctly, that when the money came in the system, we were required to charge fees for that room, that's what she stated.
That was many years ago.
Right, and it was much more evolved with the back then, they had to do blood pressure checks, all that stuff pertaining to the grant that put that in place.
How much revenue are we talking about? How much money?
Currently, and this is just going back to July one, because we don't all have the, you know, they used, the school system somehow had an automatic withdrawal, um, southern bank to that form, I guess, but back to July to today, it's about eighteen hundred dollars.
Fairly insignificant.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
It's not, it's not huge at all. I mean, we have these sports that play for two months that have double trip that.
So the issue of like the high school football players want to come live weights and everything, right now they have to pay to join, correct?
Right, well, the high school team can't come, but they have their own stuff. I mean, I guess they could, but if they're eighteen and older, or if they're with our staff. Because we have, you know, Robert at those youth stuff.
Yeah.
Those stool and up. You know, in there.
All right.
But not as the, I doubt Biggie's gonna call and say, hey, I wanna bring fifty kids and that's never, that's never gonna happen.
Police are ahead of his way for it.
Right, right, and so did all the other, you know, teams, they all use the same.
And, and kinda shifting gears a little bit as far as the, you know, we have kids, we talk about that kind of thing, that's after school weekends, that kind of stuff. What is the scope of services from eight to three weeks? What, what is staff doing during that time, and are we doing anything to actively pursue and engage our seniors? Not just offering them something, but like, are we doing to actively get out and engage and pursue our senior community to operate as somewhat of a senior center during the day, since it is a community center and not a student center?
Well, I mean, we offer classes and we've taken class, you know, class information to different churches, to the assisted living homes, different things to try to get, to get seniors to come in and participate in classes. We've offered digital literacy learning classes, I mean, I don't know how you get them, like honestly.
So outside of like the.
Unless you have a staff that can just spend all day doing that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, what is the staff currently that's there, eight to three, engaged in, in what is preventing somebody from being able to go out and have activities and do different means to pursue the senior community? And I need, having something available and actually being intentional in pursuit of seniors is are two different things, in my opinion.
True, um, but, I mean, the day-to-day is, you know, taking care of the grounds, taking care of the buildings, planning the programming that is, you know, either being registered for, offered or ongoing. You know, me myself, writing grants, making sure the staff are doing what they're supposed to be doing, putting in orders for, you know, uniforms, hats, or the ball field clay, or whatever the case may be, paint, you know, whatever we need, custodial supplies, you know, different things like that, we, I mean, we, we stay relatively busy, but at the same time, if there was a dedicated person, you know, staff by us, staff by whomever, that could, you know, go and find these people? I mean, you know, the thing that draws the most interest from that population is when they put the word out that they're gonna take a trip to the mall, or when they're gonna take a trip to a casino or something like that. The, the classes that we've offered, I'm, I'm being very serious, like, they've done that, and it, it does well, they get fifteen or twenty, and they, you know, rent a van from Quincy and then they do it.
And, and that's more, I guess, where I'm at too, like, not outsourcing, but like, activities, in-house activities, like, things to do, and not necessarily class, but like, I'm, I'm trying to think, I know you have the, with the dominoes, that they come in there and they play different things like that, but different ideas like that daytime bingo, different activities and engaging them. And I know from previous things organizing, and this is just personally with different organizations I've been in, it takes offering those things consistently for three to four months before you start having people showing up, knowing that it's gonna stay there, it's gonna be there, whether you have two people the first time or not, you keep doing it for those two people until you have an opportunity for growth. But if you don't see growth in a three to four month period, a quarter, over the year at least, then you can get reav- reevaluate, tell me what do we need to try differently now? But has it been consistent enough in that same solid twelve weeks, we're offering bingo on Mondays, two o'clock, or something like that? Has anything like that been in place that you know of, before you are during you?
Maybe before, and I think due to declining participation, it was probably done away with. When I got there, there was nothing.
Well, and I'll say, COVID time also played part of that, and we're coming out of COVID time and people are more comfortable again, so is it possible to reengage and maybe offer these options for the senior community? Seniors are, like, we need to be servicing our senior community, we don't have a senior center, we don't have a senior, um, any kind of senior activity club, organization in the county. And I just, I love that we're student focused, but we are community center, it's not under the schools anymore. I would love to see it focus more on the entire community.
Absolutely, I agree completely.
I love the senior names, it looks like good turnout, like it was fun.
It always is.
Those kind of days, you know, um, I know they have cornhole in the evening type of stuff, but it's, you know, set up cornhole for the seniors during the week, or this time or that time, or I don't know what, I don't know what's offered.
They do, they come, um, you would see, right, well, actually, they came every day for like two months, but they come and play at eleven AM, you know, but it's four.
Can we advertise it on Facebook and get it out there and?
I did, I did, and when I did, nobody came. Nobody came. But I, I understand the consistency thing, I really do, but it's, it's defeating at best when you offer things and nobody comes, and when you spend effort to put things out and you get no business. Like, it's, it's wildly frustrating, and in that, you're, you know, you're focused just and you go on to the next thing and you, you know, prepare for that. But I, I completely understand what you're saying, and there's nothing wrong with trying, it's just how long will it be? That's the, that's the thing, because, I mean, they, we, they, we, I, we all have, you know, other things that are on the plate that have to get done too. And when it's time, we'll put those things back out again, but we've had, we've had a few come and do certain things, we've done a few, um, we had a lady come in and do like a crochet class, and other than the ones that, you know, are in there playing dominoes, it might be one or two extra come into it, but, you know, we've done, after hours, we've done like an evening bingo, that, that hit our night, but that was, you know, some of your ones that are working, and some of your ones that just love it, that, you know, play as seniors, but, you know, we've, we've done a few things like that that, that do okay, but when they find out they're not gonna get money.
Yeah.
They don't really wanna, um, they don't wanna come to that, but.
And I think, one other question, which maybe, you have it for a full-time to part-time, how do the hours typically stagger? I know you obviously have more afternoon evening activities, so how, how does, how do the hours actually go? I assume you don't have four people there from.
No, I'm, I'm typically the one, Robert and myself are, you know, there first. You know, I kinda stage the office while he's, you know, doing other things, getting, moving this, moving that, cleaning that, whatever the case may be. Connie usually comes in kinda mid to late morning and goes to, you know, six or seven. Jwan, if he has programming, that he has to, you know, oversee, facilitate, who's there.
My kids love him, by the way.
Everybody. Yeah, he was, he was a godsend for the right time, I can't say this about it. But, um, he's there, you know, till eight or nine, it's just something like that, just off time, like, which is very, very rare, because he's the one that does everything sport-related for kids.
Okay.
So, I mean, just looking at right now, it's, you know, soccer clinics, volleyball clinics, flag football, and then like two weeks is baseball, softball, football. So it's, spring is very, as it's fall slightly less cool, winter's kind of in the summer time where it's one score. And he loves that, but, you know, when, when we shift to summer, you know, that's when the camps come in, that's where Connie's, you know, the head of the chicken.
Yeah, it's not a, because we've only been in this less than a year, so I am asking questions.
Oh, no, no.
Early new day, just to make curiosity on how this, how this works now.
Well, I mean, at a certain point, it would be bad if I didn't know, but I do, feel free to ask, because, I mean, I could run it down.
I'm sorry, I've been.
I'm trying to, yeah, my one question is, how do I live on Saturdays? I'm just curious, as a kid, I remember Mark Community Center.
Yeah.
There's always a, we'd be good to play basketball with my buddies, or I think there was a, like, gymnasium equipment outside that we would hang out and play on or whatever.
Right, simplest answer was the funding for that. And that might be partly why we didn't get to do that third part-time position was when we were under them, um, the minimum wage for state employees went way up.
Right.
And the line for that, you know, for their salaries for the part-time people was, you know, didn't go up, and it stayed the same, and that kinda depleted it. So where two is really the only possibility in that kind of limited hours that you get, because, you know, where they are, what was forty now, thirty-seven and a half, that gets exhausting pretty quick, and when they're working, you know, the nights to close, you know, four of them are the weakest, it's just not.
So have you thought about if the county goes back, getting another community center, I'm doing, you know, just throwing this out here, not like I'm committing anything, just vague foresight's question. Have you thought about what that facility would entail versus what you're currently in?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm offering you to say, if you say some of the things you think might should be considered at the very least.
Sure, I mean, I, I think something where seniors had a dedicated area in that, possibly a different person to oversee those endeavors, I think classroom space, similar to what we have now, gymnasium, you know, inside, you know, drop curtains, so you can run multiple different programs at one time. Outside, you know, horseshoe pits, bungee court, maybe actual soccer field or two. But, yeah, I mean, if we're, of course, yeah, I wasn't thinking courts-wise, but field space, but, I mean, tennis courts we have now, you know, pickleball lines, and they, they are good, and then people play, and not so much with the other pop program, but, baseball, softball, and combo fields. Probably with fences put at three hundred and then temporary sleeves in the ground so that you can modify it for, you know, younger age groups in softball.
About, of this, I know this is controversial, but what about swimming pool? Community swimming pool, I know there's liability issues, all kinds of stuff.
Not so much that, well, there are, of course, but that's a whole.
Well, there's a lot of kids in these counties that don't even have a chance.
That's true.
We're not close to the water anywhere, and not every kid has it, and honestly, my, my pool becomes the neighborhood pool during the summer.
I say my daughter wants to do swimming, but I'm like, I'm not driving either.
That would take, that would take an aquatic staff.
Different certifications and things like that.
I guess what I'm saying is waste of time.
Yes, like there, that, that was one of the classes that I had taken in, in school, and that was, well, that was in the, because you're, you know, testing pH balances and all that stuff all the time, and there's certain percentage of lifeguards you have to staff based on occupancy, you know.
Someone to train lifeguard, that's one of the things.
Yeah.
The program, if you wanna identify and everything near the community center, when you have a future pool.
That's, that's why. Thankfully, we build these facilities.
We look for grants, it's just maybe for the construction.
Should we look at maybe project first, post this budget time to have a planning session?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I think that is, is if we talk about it, whether people agree with me or not, these guys are better in community, we're gonna be better in community for a while, but as we grow, the drop areas around us are gonna fill in, and like so many other big areas, we're gonna end up at some point having twenty or thirty thousand people, I'll probably be long gone. But when that time comes, we shouldn't have to then be looking for somewhere else potentially, but if we give the staff and the people here to do that, it'd be nice if we thought about it ahead of time and had areas outside where we could expand to that.
And there's, there's a number of them in the, in the region that are, you know, not overdone, well, I mean, it's not like Mecklenburg County where they've got, you know, fifty lanes across, but if you had a, you know, five, eight, ten lane lap pool, fifty meters. Five, eight, ten lane lap pool, fifty meters, you can really do something with that, but. That's a, that's a level of experience I, I do not have, I don't have any background.
Commissioner Ratchus.
Yes.
And the excuse was.
Yes, so we will go into recess.
Sure.
If that's all right, um, do we have a motion for that? Technically, somebody wanna make a motion to go to recess? Second, all there, we are in recess.
He did make for his own recess.
Wait, we got the door, it's okay. We got the door, so we're, we can continue conversation, we just have to make it legal.
No problem.
Going down to below forums, that we just had commissioners, Truman and Forsyth are meeting for, oh, it's now video, not audio, so I don't, I don't know if that was really that good.
I'm sorry for causing some distraction, but when, when we're not gonna get that, I guess we do need to hear some of your priorities and ideas.
Well, we can continue the conversation, it's just not an official meeting now, we're in recess, but can, because they're below forum. We're out of meeting.
So I've looked around a little lot of places, I brag about that and I liked it, but some places was terrible, some places was good, but even like everywhere else, Italy especially, Japan. They had everything from small waiting pools for little kids at pretty low maintenance.
Yeah.
To full-size swimming pools, and I remember thinking, man, this doesn't seem that hard, but we strap ourselves down a lot of requirements.
I was gonna say, the U S tends to have some over regulations.
Right, so I guess all I'm getting at is, is like, I remember five thousand or thirteen hour, a little like three years old, and we had a waiting pool right across the street. And it was knee-high, you still had to have somebody watching it, you still had to have a lifeguard, but it was terribly intensive. It wasn't like, I think in Japan, you had to have a three-foot high fence, and here it's like forty-two inch or something.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, like I said, thinking about the future, which we did, you could add kitty clips, something, you could add, or maybe, and maybe it's not a perfect, maybe.
And there's splash pads.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
You know, puddle jumping areas, I mean, not, you know, I'm, I'm not meta toddler that didn't, you know.
I'm an eighteen-year-old that lost one.
Right, yeah, exactly, and I mean, this, there, there, there are many things you could, I mean, there's indoor, there's outdoor, I mean, I've seen.
Yeah.
Indoor splash pads and, you know, waiting pools and of course, there's outdoors, I've seen outdoor flat pools and indoor. I mean, it's just about what you wanna do, how, how much funding you can gain, you know, it's the, the, the opportunities are endless, there, there really are.
Say the indoor outdoor, you go to the YMCA and stuff, I've played one more, the theory, and those good YMCA's, I've gone to those. And I'll be honest with you, I'm good at football, I wanna be one of these people, but you get, go get the pool and there's a whole ton of old folks in there exercising, right?
Oh, yeah.
And now I'm one of those, I like to do it.
It's big.
It's all about getting them, getting the pool, a lot of folks will go because you're not gonna get the pool, and I've never seen one of those places where they didn't have like thirty people.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's some things that cross lines of the, the target audience, whether it's kids or families or seniors.
Way to service the whole community, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta live within our means, and I'm big on living within our means, but we ought to consider that, we're looking at our plan.
Yeah.
One of the things I forgot to prompt Lisa's speak, Tim and Shields here yesterday, when the board had your planning session out at the, uh, State Park. We talked about. Making a request to have the remainder of the SCIF grant, the State Construction Infrastructure Grant, which was to rehab the old community center. Have that converted to A and E cost, architecture and engineering. Lisa filled out the paperwork and last week we got approval for that. So that, that money is maybe four hundred and fifty thousand and round. So that's the money that could be. Put into this, this design effort and, and construction drawings, so when the grant becomes available, hopefully we're gonna save, we can get shuttle-ready, uh.
So is there a timeline stipulation on a four hundred and fifty?
I'd have to go place it back later.
Cause I would be curious on that, I mean, I would say again.
I want them to skip during halftime.
I would say, cause I, again, following, following budget, because obviously this priority right now, come July or June, whenever we approve it. We can move into conversations about the planning, since we do have the funds to do that, that would probably be ideal. I mean, I'm excited, I'm excited.
I'm reading those accomplishments, uh, Davis, whatever.
I am so hopeful that it will be beginning of May, but I will know more very soon.
I'm just saying, well, the direction.
I'm just like, I, whatever date we have to make work to get him here, we will, we will make that. So.
Has, has, has any come around yet?
Um, she. Communicate some, she apparently doesn't schedule this, she put me in touch with his scheduler, whole different person than her, so. We're gonna get the scheduler to figure out a date that he will be available to come here, and then we're gonna invite in Senator Hennig and Representative Ward as well. Have, you know, key players that are able to have conversations for future planning, and the idea was to have them, um, so we could go over some. Some short-term and long-term goals and see what types of funding, appropriations, different things are out there, because they know more at state and obviously federal levels of what. Um, different funding opportunities are available than we do, and they can be a little more, um, creative and figuring out how to accommodate some of these things. So, yeah, we hopefully, hopefully it will be in May, but, um, early May, but I'm still waiting for that confirmation. Yeah.
What else you got?
I bet the, uh, I'll bring this up Saturday again, since we're not a Christian session. Uh, the walking trail out of there, there's one little footbridge, I heard it finally got someone. So you got, almost got me and my wife, okay, I slipped on that outside board, it flew up and hit her, but it wasn't bad, and I heard Bill Day, kid, he did get whacked.
Yeah, yeah, she, they were running cross-country on it, and if you go too far to the edges.
Yeah.
Like if you're.
Pivot's on those, on the two boards.
You're past the stud or the strut underneath, it just.
So would, has it been repaired, okay?
Yeah, the board didn't break, it just.
That's the pivoting, you know, honestly, I feel bad, I guess maybe a back year ago I should have reworked, but it didn't happen to be like a year ago.
We've, we've replaced. On those two flattens, we've replaced probably. Four different boards that did, you know, crack, somebody was just walking or pushing a stroller or something and it went through, but we, we've replaced a few of them. Yeah.
I bet the bridge, how stable is that? It looks like it's got some serious washout of some of the soil structure.
I mean, y'all know as well as I do, none of it's good, I mean, the whole trail itself has root damage underneath and there's function like speed bumps. Even for the most, most careful people and. Uh, there's one little section that's just moss. I mean, I, you know, took pictures of that last week or two when we were out there moving leaves around and stuff, but this. Yeah, it, it's, if, if anything, it needs to be ripped up and redone, but I don't know, I mean, that's gonna be extensive, because it's. I mean, even asphalt over concrete is cheaper, but we're talking about a half mile or five D Y, it's gonna be expensive.
I mean, I would, my personal, again, and here to be physically conservative, we need to wait to see what happens to the community center in general. If it's gonna be relocated across the street, we don't wanna go and.
I agree with that, so probably even if we lay out, this is the new community, it's three to four years away, as soon as. And you wouldn't wanna have somebody repeatedly getting injured or disaster, liability issues.
It's very cheap, and then a permanent, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whole thing would be crazy.
Yeah, you can buy sections and cut it up and grind the roots out and then.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's the thing is, in that, is, uh, the root system is what, in that, uh, the level of the learning people or learning service.
Yeah.
And doing repair, you gotta pull everything out and move underneath.
Yeah. He's like on a rhythm.
Yeah, right.
So, so my question is, is believe that where it does connect the budget is, you have anything, or you can propose anything for those repairs? Is that something to do with any of your normal budget?
Or natural repairs.
Right.
I don't think that would, uh. I don't think that would fall in, you know, that would have to be actually, and no, I didn't.
Well, we need to make better risk management initiatives and, and program that money into Crystal's budget, like we're doing the courthouse, broken sidewalk. On the old quarters.
It's county cap?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd hate to have somebody get hurt now to December, counties watch. Cause once we're aware, there's really needed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll, that'll go a long way.
So when you talk about risk management, then I guess it's on you, my, to come back and say, hey, this is a significant risk error. And address this by certain amount of time.
Okay.
Why is it real Spanish?
I can't, I can't walk around here right now.
Well, I agree, you know.
If, if the bridges are stable and sound, then the other part too, this is where the roots are bad. At the very least, you ought to be like spray painting, bright orange, or those are, cause it'll be somebody that'll say, I didn't see my hair, I broke my nose, I broke my arm.
Like cautionary.
Any of that, like parking paint for the hill of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something. But then, at the same time, if you don't repaint it every month or two, there are any, that's where it all, so you need to have the land. So if you paint it, then how soon can you get a repair?
Does the county own the land on the west side of that trail? Um, like towards central direction, is the land tree?
I don't think so, I think that six-foot fence is the.
Is the actual property.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause those roots, you're right, the roots come through and there, you know.
And the trees are, you know.
But you're allowed to cut the limbs off though, if they were a property. Legally, I mean, you actually have every right, any limbs that hang over your property, you can.
Cut down the fence line, yeah.
You can cut this completely off. And that might actually, though some or some, I don't know, that would reduce the moss and the dry out fence that'll run out.
Is there any department that has pole saws or anything like that?
We would usually try to contract that out, uh, we'll just name Brad.
Brad and Tree.
Okay.
It's kind of jaguar trades for Crystal, you can have them, just about any brand issue.
I can do anything, yeah. Um, no, I agree with that, good point.
That's a good point, that, that honestly, I found that.
And I'm gonna verify the property line first, like.
Well, if the fence is on the very line, you can just cut to the fence line.
Yeah, but I mean, the lower we do to verify the property lines, the trees and the root system and everything are an issue, then verify that and see. If we have.
The reason, if it crosses your property line, you can do whatever you want, I mean, yeah. Right, a lot of people don't like it, you'll see people throwing a fit on TV, people raising a cane, and YouTube videos where people get mad about it, but cops always come in and.
I mean, cause typically, when you have a fence line, you have a bit of a.
Yeah.
Bit of a.
And they're usually not right on.
They're not usually right on, so I would wonder what.
Yeah.
I would verify that.
And that's just a, I mean, it's just a, a buffer, it's just a.
Right.
Solid chunk of. Time, really.
Just determine who's it actually is.
Right.
That might be important too.
But yeah, that's a good question.
That's fair.
Who tends to deed first in front of that?
That's fair, I mean, the community center has been there since I was in high school.
First, first, the G P S, uh, who's that?
I'm G P S right now.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about.
G I S.
G I S.
Yeah. Which I know that's not a hundred percent like, you know, accurate there, but it'll show us if it's. Far enough or from the other property that we think we have some leeway.
Mike found out that it is the county. You don't have to take it all.
You guys were saying you want to take it all, take some part of it.
Some of it, yeah.
That would reduce your workload a little bit.
Yeah, dude, the, I mean, the way there's tennis courts, just collect leaves and that, on that side, it's, it's crazy.
Those trees collect tennis balls and.
Yeah, they do.
So what is that question?
How far past that fence is the property line?
What part of the property line do you mean?
No, it's responsible for playing the tennis courts.
We do, they do, everybody does. Just depends who's playing and win, we try to blow the leaves off, frankly, who blows the leaves off? When they have matches, they've got a couple of little blowers, they go. But their stuff's in the fall, so it's not, it's not sure, fall, it's, you know, August, September, October. You know, so none of this fall, then there's not much that they have to do. Main, main, um, you know, the winner play up.
Yeah, I mean, I heard the same with tennis, that, I mean, if somebody in the public company played, I played tennis out of my daughter years ago, I played in first year, high school with a place, we played tennis.
Yeah.
It would be always my.
I don't know what that.
But, but I remember that, and I did, this was very funny, can I remember this?
Um, her, what we're.
My first guy that we.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying, her, what we're seeing here, it looks like they actually own the trees.
There you go.
Yeah.
It, it even looks like it, it, the property line moves to accommodate the tree line, it looks like. So, if that can be verified.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah, that's it.
See, see where it comes out?
Oh, yeah.
It goes out where the trees go out, and it looks like it moves to accommodate that.
An absolute double.
So I wonder if we put in the trees as a buffer for requests of the previous property owners. But the properties changed hands two or three times since the original.
Why didn't everybody do the evangence on the outside of the fence?
Or possibly all the tiers, yeah, that's true.
That was probably, that was probably more likely.
So.
Secondary succession, you have to work terms, call it biology when it grew.
I've just heard of all the tiers, I think it's all about.
Not a lot of.
I asked, it's not, my ear went for you.
For me, I mean, I think you really ought to consider, somehow we ought to be considering, if there's some small cost and cutting that clear out, it'd keep you from having that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If you do repairs now, if we really don't get the community center for eight years or something, you hopefully will have to repeat the root.
If nothing else, we could get bids and see, see what the bids would look like.
Yeah.
We have a baby, uh, I don't know, county, we will come and play sports and.
Yeah.
Is it a different fee for out of county, or, I know some counties charge different?
Some do, some don't, I've found that. When your, your numbers are hard to get with.
We don't wanna do any.
Somebody wants to come, yeah, come on.
Like, what, what cast, what? What can?
They have, we have out of county kids.
Yeah.
Hold on, we've had football players, we've had baseball, softball.
Independent football team?
No, they're playing on our team.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's Matt's, I can't, it's gonna be playing in our rap league.
So those, uh, sixty-eight, I think that was the last time I heard, they were playing flag football.
Yeah.
Probably, how many of them will be?
Actually, I think they're all here, most of them, there's a lot of them from T S C, like, right many. That was the biggest chunk that Jawan was able to identify, but I think they're all, they're all here, there's a couple of softball players. Um, I think one or two fifteen-year-old boys, baseball players, cause the Husky, they didn't. They didn't do it, they claimed they didn't have good enough numbers for over the twelve, so a couple of kids came out.
What sport?
Played baseball and softball.
Really?
Yeah, twelve and downs. But, you know.
Yeah.
They worked like three years going out pitch, the Husky guys, they had like fourteen, so they were actually offering us to play them on weekends.
And they all age out.
We played the Chawan guys, and it was extra experience, we were gonna play those guys, they had tons of kids.
Well, I mean, you look at, look at where the high school.
Their age, I don't think that.
Well, they go to their, or to their academy or, yeah.
Yeah, that's still not enough.
They taught themselves, maybe, yeah, whatever, like each other, have the trees off. Or bids, not even, I guess, legal bids, but.
I don't know how far back, it kind of gets to twenty thousand dollars or something.
I don't know. Maintenance and the different, and the saving and all.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just like open that up.
Yeah.
I say this in Chili's apartment, you walk, you walk in, right, and you, you're like a certain kind of experience, like Chili, you have to work, and the sun is kind of, like, it's almost like thick jam, and you're getting that sun, and it's like, oh my god.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, and, you know, that's something, I mean, that, that corner of the full-size baseball field, I mean, there's a certain amount of, you know, ground rot that occurs, because it stays so.
Does it affect the, um, mini garden area with the shade coming in and out?
No, cause the morning sun kinda comes over the building.
I'm thinking of the geography challenge, so I don't know where.
Well, east, west.
That whole slot, the way back, it's a lot of best questions, you want.
Yeah.
Not my worst, you want some buffer, but you want a big wide spot so you can access outside the fence.
Yeah, and there are gates on that, you can go through it.
If you get the.
Candy or.
If you can get the gate, you, you had a, you're gonna launch it, now I tried to pull this for a ball that went over, I couldn't get the gate, I couldn't get the boot.
Well, certain gates just stay locked, but the ones on that perimeter fence, they're not locked, at least not now, cause we've had to go in and collect things, like you said.
So do we have to go back in the? So do we have to go back in the session to, to release him or?
Um, no, not, we don't have to, we came out, but because of it, um, so when it ends, it just kind of ends at this point and then. We might have to start the other, or just begin the session and then when. Ever we have a third commissioner come in, then we'll go back into, yeah. So everything right now is just.
I'll just come back.
You guys have something to tell us?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm excited you have that also.
Yeah. I appreciate it, because like, we were, it was just my curiosity, I wasn't sure how big the operations went and different things we hadn't had to be concerned prior to really know.
Well, and I, and I appreciate everything, honestly. I mean, um, I try every day to be in a book, I don't, you know. If I know it, I'll tell it, you know, if I don't know it, I'll try to find out and, you know, get back to you kind of thing.
Well, this isn't really all, but this is from your perspective, the, um. The body thing before each of the, how was that?
That was, that was fantastic. I got to beat the stomach twice.
Okay, cool.
So I had to feel down, but five minutes at each station was not.
I, I had wanted to come see it, and I was out of town.
Yeah, it was really great. The kids, the kids did well, the, the volunteers did well.
Good.
The folks that brought that to us, I mean, work like a machine.
And there was a number of kids, I guess, that came through then, right, all the schools?
I think fifth grade down, for all three schools.
First grade, always places, they went.
Okay.
From first grade.
I'm thinking that was, that it was all elementary schools.
Yeah, it was. I think the middle schoolers would have gotten something, at least like sixth grade, probably should have come. But it was, it was cool to see that thing, you know.
Some opportunity arises again, it should happen.
I don't think Kelly's, wants to jump on it right next year or anything, but I think.
She was a star next.
Yes.
She's big, she grew, she's a good kid. I think her, she played ball, coached, I coached against her when she played against my daughter, she was good. She's always been a good kid, good, great girls. Yeah.
I think because her brother was with me and Kristen.
Yeah.
Yeah. She, she does a lot with our summer camps, stuff, her and Connie.
Yeah.
I mean, they're.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Forage camp is pretty awesome. We never done that before until she started doing it. We take our kid to the forage camp down there in Terrell County.
Yep.
Pretty awesome.
Yep, we got to go with, you know, for, for a day. We went down to the nature last summer, one of the meets. That's, that's quite a, that's quite a place they had there.
Yeah. Little, little Terrell camp.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
They actually. I think we've been talking about water issues. Here at that place, you look across the field, their water treatment, that's right there, they have a reverse osmosis plant right there. A little tine plant, yeah, in Terrell.
I've been to Terrell twice now.
Why is standing about there?
Okay.
Her, her cousin is on the school board, so she bends my ear and back into her ear, it's pretty funny.
Wow. Thank you for all the information and look forward to coming together to plan for the future, thank you.
Anything to think of in the meantime, just let me know.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, so move on. All right, so if we get a motion to come out of recess and back in soon.
Say.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Okay. Then I'm gonna want to hand on this control, you're, from the, this is our spirit. Might go ahead and hand it to.
So, uh, we, we took over animal control, uh, last year, July first. Um, and, uh, many duties of animal control is to enforce county and state ordinance. We cooperate with the health department, they help you report with them. Uh, we have one employee, Al Parker, and he's a part-time employee. He makes eighteen dollars and ninety cents an hour. Um, we answer a citizen request, y'all get a list of those every month on our monthly report. It averages at least one a day, probably. But again, he is a part-time employee, we keep him under, so far under nine hundred and ninety-nine hours per year. And oddly enough, uh, over fifty percent of our calls, they deal with animals, but they deal with, uh. With neighbor grievances. And, uh, so you're actually between neighbors most of the time, instead of dealing with an animal, it's you and the neighbors and the animals involved. Um, if you're looking at some of our. Assets that we have, we have, uh, animal control truck, a dog box, two dog pens that we accumulated from the sheriff's office. Uh, of course, he has one computer, six cat cages, we have just ordered a dog cage with the. Thanks of our finance officer who found the money for it. We have a catch-all pole that maybe we use for dogs, and oddly enough, we have a snake pole.
We got that.
We have had, uh, three or four snake dogs in the last couple of months. Old assistance that has snakes. In the house and, um, he goes and gets those. Uh, he has a handheld radio that was borrowed from. Billy Tuckwiler. That I did put in the budget to possibly buy one if, uh, if Billy ever needs that security to that. Um, he also has a truck radio that he can call nine-one-one. Um, I would say eighty percent of the calls that come through, um, we call them AC one, but Al Parker comes through nine-one-one, so. Um. Let's see. He, uh, he does have a taser and he does have a revolver. That we got for him last year in July. Um, I did budget for a tranquilizer gun. So the reason for getting a budgeting for it is because. Recently, we needed a tranquilizer gun on the weekend. And we could not, the person that we would use for tranquilizer gun would be, um, Dana Demaschus, head of the animal shelter, and she, uh, she was out of town. So we ended up having to call the sheriff of Perth County. For, for, for him to let the, uh, animal control people of Perth County come over with their tranquilizer gun during the weekend. So it just, uh, it will eliminate having to call the deputy or the sheriff of Perth County. Um, I, I think it would go in budget for it and, uh, will require some training, I think that's something else. County Community College, but I did, uh, blade it for that. Um. Let's see.
Okay, ask any questions then?
I mean, if you're willing, I'm ready.
Just, Chris, why did we pull animal control out from the police department and the interfacial?
Because the job wasn't getting done.
The numbers in the shelter were not reflective of. Of, it, it did not solidify as keeping it where it was.
Yeah, and so I had, I had mentioned this, but since July last year, we delivered sixty-nine dogs and ninety-five cats to animal shelter.
And they had had less than a dozen in months.
Wow, okay. So, that's good.
Just to, yeah.
He's very responsive. We were getting lots of calls. The, calls are going unanswered.
And I, but we had not one call that were being answered for animal control, and I would like to, to verify that. The animal control officer we had was responding to calls, however, it was acting outside of the duty, because per things, we have to bring them in and take them to shelter. Humans reuniting with things, which is technically per contracts, not how this could handle things. And so because we're getting responded to, animals were being reunited, but a lot of the channels going through the shelter and then being reunited and having that re, renaissance D and that kind of thing. So it was, it was roundabout way. It wasn't that it was completely not doing the job, it was that it wasn't following protocol. Just to be fair.
And that's why when you look at the list of people that we respond to per month, you know, every, you know, when they come through nine-one-one, it's no doubt that we received a call. And so it's just to make sure y'all know that we've responded to every call we can have. And of course, during the last six to seven months, you know, we're finding cages, whether it was from the previous. Animal control personnel, one before that, and we're finding old cages in various places, Scott County, where they'll put out and have a big dog, so.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of that, and I, I mean, the way it's, we're paying so much to the shelter every year, like we're, we're tri-county, we're one of the three that's handled and to not utilize it.
I think this enforcement view or a representation.
Yes, I saw, you know, they're like, oh, okay, yeah, like, I've never heard of this.
You were reaching this though.
No, I wasn't doing it.
I'm kidding.
And then, actually, the one for the landfill too, I was like, oh, I just did another meeting, they, I asked them about giving me a, um. A Zoom link, because I said, short notice, I didn't know, and they sent a Zoom link, but I didn't see it until after it was, or a meeting started, so I'm like, okay, so. Drop duties on two right now because of that one, so not intended to.
But he, he can't, uh, I went for, uh.
There was actually.
Actually, yeah, if, if, as long as I don't advance, my, my calendar was very sketchy. Truthfully, I have three calendars on two things, trying to keep track of that, it's tough.
Yeah.
But I don't mind, I, I've attended one before for, uh, Mount Chair.
I've, I've laid it as a separate question, I mean, I don't show, because if I, either forgot or did not.
I just want to make sure someone does, uh.
I agree, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, half our budget goes to animal shelter, at least half of it. Right now, I think if I'm right, a hundred and ten thousand a year is what we proposed for. That's the current year, the current year.
And I don't think we received a, a request yet.
Would I call the, the.
So it's a hundred, hundred and ten thousand for. I think she says, I think they're meeting today to talk.
Okay.
Oh, good, yeah.
We have that conversation, but, uh. Um, maybe, are there any other questions? But if it is, have a.
So, so for animal control, he is a licensed enforcement officer, right? He writes citations and stuff?
Yeah, he, he only is a licensed animal patrol.
Oh, yeah, 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 we don't want to write tickets or anything.
That's right, and, uh, uh, he, he's real, we, we try to be lenient.
Right.
Um, but, uh, but it is a fifty dollar charge per animal. If, say, uh, he's been there checked for ready vaccination, they failed to do so.
Right.
Um, he gives them, you know, sometimes seven to ten days to respond, and if they haven't scheduled with a veterinarian, um, about seven to ten days. He, he can issue a citation of fifty dollars per animal.
Right.
And so just for example, we had, uh, a lady recently that called us and wanted us to pick up some of the cats she was feeding. And there were fifteen cats, and, uh, and none of them had shots. And so then our proposal was, well, you have to get them all shots, and that was, uh, just too big of an expense, you know. So naturally, she told us to, um, to, yeah, to take them to the shelter, but she wanted to keep three. And, uh, then we told her, well, you, you have to give them shots, or it'll be a penalty if you're gonna get them shots. And she said then, well, just, you know, take them all, and she found out that the three she wanted to keep were all friends. So, uh, we ended up going back again in the years, so, uh, so that's again, what, what we end up. Did you want that door, uh, hundred, it was seized.
Oh, that was the dogs in my house?
Yes, so recently, on February twenty-fourth, I remember distinctly, it was on Saturday night, that a resident died. And it's someone that we had been there before, because she has twenty-three dogs. And, and, um. And we found out she was, uh, the sheriff's department called us because she was passed away inside her home. And had two dogs that went to home with her, they would not let her in, that's when we called her, we tried to put tranquilizer, anyway. We, uh, went, uh, to Mr., uh, the, to the chagrin of Mrs. Sauer, we waited about ten, ten days for. Um, for a state to be settled before we dispersed the dogs and moved the statements over settled. And so we ended up taking all the dogs to the shelter and dispersed them after that.
Wow.
And so. It was essentially all kind of dog, didn't they? Yeah, all of them, all of them did it. What was the breed? Um.
Oh, she was a breeder, it's all like one breeding dog?
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, and it was a, uh, exotic.
I knew that, I can't remember what I was saying.
Yeah. It was, uh. You did photos, did you? Yeah. Yeah. Like a show and tell. Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure I put it close where we'd set and. Feature references, but, yeah, it's, uh. It was an interesting breed, one I've never heard of before, and, uh, but, uh. A lot of people like it, but she, uh, she did a lot of podcasts too, and really puts on podcasts that were over an hour long. And, um.
Right here, you're. You know, you see recently, the, you know, the dad had a hundred cats, and his house, his house got fired. And he's, he was like a rescue guy, he was a responsible guy, rescue, I can't remember if it's San Francisco, it seems like it was West Coast somewhere, just like this week. And, uh, he went, lit a fire, he got out, got like fifty of his cats out, went back and tried to save more of them, he died in the fire saving his cats. And then come to find out they're saying they think it's arson, that somebody didn't want him in the neighborhood, even though it was, it was not a, you know, stereotypical cat guy with crazy cats in the house all cluttered. It was a responsible guy, had a, you know, yard and area and rehomed and, but. You know, he loved his cats. Terrible. I thought you were telling me, you said that they had a bunch of dogs in a lot of the house. I've heard gruesome stories.
Right, yeah, I thought that's the right, it's like they were protecting her.
And we have had two senior citizens recently, when their health gets bad, and they won't have to live by their house because they're living in the facility or assisted living. Uh, a lot of times they have to get rid of the dogs, and we have taken ten.
Yeah.
Out of home.
Trying to present it. Is it the microboils?
Huh?
Is it the microboils? Is that what they were?
They, uh, it was.
It was the micro.
Well, that's the new song, always, so, oh, are these two, like, you got two dogs?
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, if you, if you go to track and the website, they.
Yeah.
They were, I mean, the cute little microboils, they were, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll come up with a picture, I'm sorry I.
Yeah, I think that's what the breed was. Yeah, I think it was a microboil, I was trying to remember.
Yeah, it's, but, but, uh, but, yeah, it was, uh, like I said, it was a breed. And, um, yeah, so. But, uh, but all of them were, but it was a big, uh, ordeal because the family lived in Ohio. And, um, and, and probably the, I wouldn't say, I, I would say the. The estate or the money left in the estate, I think all of them were wrapped up in the dollars. Uh, money-wise, so it was a pretty big ordeal to, when it took the perfect time to, to, to put the items up for sale, because they couldn't claim them because they wouldn't settle, settle the estate. It was different because we, we had a dog from Michigan, one from Ohio, one was in jail, pretty big ordeal. We, we used legal kinds of the whole time, I'm sure. But, um.
So, those dogs and cats being taken to the shelter, obviously talking about giving both, and they charge us per animal and that's how we buy into it, or are they just. Summarize their, our pay cost, we take our proportion, or we get a proportion based on how much we use them?
I think it's just split three ways.
It's just a track time, it's a little share.
Yeah. They do a really good job, they're a great, so.
Yeah, can you hear the option, you guys, like they.
Where is it at now? I forgot.
It's on, oh gosh, is it Paradise? No, that's not, that's where it's on, yeah.
It's called Icaria Road.
Icaria Road, yeah.
So we're going thirty-two.
Oh, we did that.
It's about fifteen miles from here, and there's a big water tank where you turn, and it's called Icaria Road, and it's only about a half or three quarters mile.
On the right, yeah.
You know, when you pass the left where you turn a bit, it hurts, if you go by another five miles, it's all the. Turn.
But they had a, a very nice setup over there, and, um, Dana, if you reach out to her, she's happy to give you a tour.
And animals segregated by calving, so.
Yeah, we have cages, yeah.
Yeah, so if your animal, you gotta think of some of these.
Makes sense, to go over there.
From gates and, you know, or any of these yours. That's the important thing, is that whole, so if somebody's gone for the weekend, their dog gets out and gets picked up, they can go flying.
Right.
Yeah, and they just put me forward, and, and I think we are not able to take any animals there for the rest of the week, up until Monday of next week, so if you go to the meeting. Commission force five thousand, how much the report costs, it's a pretty big ordeal, and I think they are adding an extra room to, um.
And the reason because of the stipulation for the state with, um, or exploring it has to be different things like that, so they, they're trying to get a state.
Split there, the state control.
Yeah.
And on the outside, you cannot have any concrete that has tunnels on it. So it's pretty strict from clues to that round. Any other questions regarding animal control?
We're free to go into recess for lunch, then I guess.
So you're in recess.
All in favor? We are, recess all right, she will pause.
Yeah, I see that now, it's that, I think exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's right there on your way. All right, so we can reach into some other recess.
So move second.
All in favor, everybody, we are out of recess, we are moving on to the DSS, um Department of Social Services portion of the day. Um, do you have any introduction, everyone, I hand it to.
I'll just say it's a pleasure to work with Mr. Smith, and he's got one of the toughest jobs in Gates County.
Appreciate that, I feel a little warm.
And he was original.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. I'm gonna get out of the room, everyone, link for the opportunity um to speak for the commissioners in regards to our budget. Uh this is might have been my second time, I'm gonna stick air quotes, being in front of the entire board, so again, it is always a pleasure, and we have this opportunity, not sure. What to actually uh what to provide, other than I know you guys are gonna see the uh budget template.
I want to say, yeah, if you can open up with this description, please.
Yeah, okay, I see, yeah, I'm gonna get it, I was just making, trying to lay 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 it on real quick. But again, I mean, you guys have the uh topic of the budget template that we uh submitted, uh that Williams writing, we've also provided a copy of that as little updated, slightly changed, with a lower number than what we were briefly providing. In that budget summary, um that I uh sent you all earlier. Um I've also provided you a brief PowerPoint presentation, briefly highlighting what our office does, slight uh explanation of some numbers. And just uh some highlights about what uh we are requesting as a uh department, as well as some uh potential uh impacts that there could be. Um also, in addition, we have provided you all with a copy of our salary request breakdown, where our current salaries are under requested. Uh also, uh with some side notes beside those, also, there's an attached page that does provide you a brief oversight uh. Of what the estimated salary reimbursements are, uh both for the current and for the proposed salary, and those are estimates based on the fact that. The way our staff do code, it varies um based on what task they're doing, so some some tasks may get uh. reimbursed at seventy-five percent rate, others at fifty percent rate, so it varies, so this is just a soft estimate. Pretty sad, a general idea of what does come back when we do spend money towards the DSS, so we'll get that. Um so to move forward with our actual presentation, again, the mission of our office is the Gates County Department of Social Services committed to improving the follow-up life. Uh to the citizens of our community, we accomplish this through the provision of public assistance, child mental protection, support services, which promotes self-sufficiency. And also, we do serve each person with compassion, efficiency, professionalism, and respect for diversity, provide essential services to protect, support, and empower Gates County residents. Um for our local commissioners who may not be aware of our structure, um the DSS director does report to uh Department of Social Services Board. That has two social service commission appointed members, um a board commissioner appointed member, as well as an actual board of commissioner, county commissioner, that sits on our board. Uh you see here the list of our current uh board members, Mrs. Erin Riddick is our chair, um Ms. Mariah Wilfrey is the vice chair, Commissioner Brown Tree sits on our board as our executive appointment. Um Ms. Renee McGinnis is our county commissioner appointment, and Mrs. Bola Brown Tree is our social services commission appointment. The social services commission is the state entity that uh basically oversees DSS boards across the state. Um quick overview of the services we provide here, unprotected services, our child welfare services, and adult protective services, which I'm assuming most of you all are aware of. In addition, uh our economic services, Medicaid, food assistance, which is basically SNAP, uh WorkFirst or TANEN. Uh which is a program that's under our protective services unit, um energy assistance programs, as well as child support enforcement, which is contracted out through uh Young Williams. Um also, a quick overview of what our data has looked like, this um, the current data reflects what we are, where we are currently currently at. Um the data that's listed reflects the state fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. Um so in office traffic last year, uh had a little over three thousand visitors come over to our office, that came out to about twenty visitors a month. Um that number has basically maintained itself right around that twenty to thirty uh people uh a month figure. Um our Medicaid program, we currently have a little over two thousand cases, uh currently, we are at twenty-two hundred. Uh that is a five percent increase as it currently stands, the total uh participants at the end of the twenty-four fiscal year was twenty-four hundred. And the current number is slightly above twenty-five hundred, I'm not sure if you want me to read that actual number, I was having to go recording this.
I think you could.
Okay, no problem, I just want to preserve transparency. Um again, the Medicaid cases uh at the end of the twenty-four fiscal year was two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. We are currently at two thousand three hundred and sixty-one, that's a five percent increase. The total Medicaid participants, um at the end of the state fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. Um the current number is a hundred more, two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. Um as it stands with our food nutrition services unit, we have seven hundred and forty-six cases as of the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We are currently standing at seven hundred and eighty-three cases, that's about four point seven percent increase. Um total participants, um at the end of the state fiscal year twenty-four, slightly under fifteen hundred, one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, and we are currently at two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. I follow that, that number is incorrect, it should be about fifteen, sixteen hundred, I can provide that number just once I'm.
Is it sixteen hundred?
Yeah, it should be right around sixteen hundred, I can provide that uh number after this meeting is necessary.
If that two is a one, then we.
Yeah, all right, tell me when you're. I'm so far in the. Um our board chart is on the next page, we currently have a staff, total staff of twenty-two individuals. Um this is our current board chart that breaks down how breaks down how our uh the department is set up. We have twenty full-time positions and two uh part-time positions, we don't have any available positions. Um hopefully, not on uh plastic or whatever this is, if we can get um our proposed requested position approved, it's one position. Uh and also our protective services unit, which is APS and CPS, we have one supervisor as well, and two social worker and AID, which is basically child welfare program. And uh two social worker free positions, which are adult protective services staff. All right, now moving on to the meat and potatoes, uh getting close to what you all really wanna hear for. Uh we, our current budget as it stands originally was adopted at a little over two million dollars, two two million forty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The actual amount ended up being uh two million one hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine, two million one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um that was increased due to uh the county, including retirement, fighting all those things. Um breaking that down as of where we currently are, um as of April twenty twenty-five, we only spent about sixty-five percent of our uh budget. Uh the local funding contributions or expenditures, which is what we pulled from a three thirty seven report, in regards to the county dollar that's contributed overall, um. It's gonna be a little under forty-two percent, forty-one point nine eight percent, or seven hundred and two, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. That is as of the March twenty twenty-five report. Um the federal slash state funding, which is what we get reimbursed off of, is at fifty-eight percent, which is nine hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, um our current budget request for this upcoming vis- uh fiscal year, um as I uh explained, I did some digging on our current uh budget request and realized I. Uh mistakenly that removed a certain um item, and I'll talk about that briefly. Uh previously, last fiscal year, we were going to undergoing a six-year uh document imaging project, which was gonna range about forty-seven, forty-eight thousand a year. Um we outright eliminated that project, uh due to some disagreements with the terms of the agreement that we had. So we just found it better to just uh step back away from that and uh figure out some other options and avenues in order to um. Sort out our file, because it is uh overfilled, and uh if you've been over there, it's uh interesting place to go, uh depending on. Um but nonetheless, uh we're currently are requesting proposed budget of two million one hundred and eighty-one dollars, two hundred, two, man, I can't get my numbers right today. Two million one hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Um again, that is an estimate, uh since again, we don't know what retirement like, uh all those things are gonna end up being. So that figure will likely change, um as it stands, based on where we're currently at, that is a point three two percent increase from our current budget, based on seven thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollar increase. Uh the key changes what we are actually requesting, um is a salary increase of five percent, or or a cola increase, whichever is greater. Again, um we are at a point now where um we've been uh lucky enough to stay above the water, based on how our our office is structured. We have staff who are sitting in multiple roles, um due to how we are structured with the limited uh options to add additional staff. So we're kind of plugging and playing, figuring out what makes the most sense, so we can swim to our 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 main destination. Um so again, part of that is trying to avoid um overworking our staff and compensating appropriately. A good example of this I like to use is with our social workers. Um compared to, say, some of our neighboring counties, um our social workers are fairly great. Meaning they will take an intake haul, and it ends up being strengthened, everyone is still doing the investigation. If it ends up leading down in multiple routes, whether it's foster care, adoption, that worker would still remain with that case overseeing it, following the necessary paperwork, paperwork. Uh along those lines, compared to some of the larger counties, neighboring counties, where they are staff significantly enough to where they now have workers focused on the foster care portion. Or just into, um but yet still get paid, if not the same reward that our staff, this is why I advocate for this. Um so just putting that out there, um we are requesting a new position. Excuse me, uh IMC three worker, who would be a pseudo lead worker, quality assurance and trainer. That individual would work with uh not only myself, Ms. Hale, our uh financial officer, as well as both the economic program supervisors from Medicaid and Food Nutrition Services to assist with. Audits, MOU compliance, pulling data, uh second-party reviews to ensure staff um are are accurately keen in data. As well as backup security and finance officer. Um we've been, in all honesty, doing amazingly well, not having to actually request staff, other than a social worker. A position that we requested that we had to gain back when I first got here. Um to stay above float without requesting additional positions, even when Medicaid expansion came about, and there was an influx of increasing cases. Um and I still feel relatively confident we're an active staff, however, to ensure with. The upcoming uh reimplementation of the memorandum of understanding between both counties and the states and the federal government, and how they are now. Um actively enforcing corrective action plans, I think it's important for us to, one, be uh ahead of the curve when it comes to making sure. We are accurately uh performing and hitting those uh key performance indicators that the state mandates of us, because. The MOU agreement that we sign every two to three years, uh mandates that if we have to hit these uh key performance metrics, if we do not, we run the risk of losing funding. Uh in insert code, Medicaid, food stamps, APS, energy, name it. Uh it's difficult, I'm only on myself, but our our economic benefit supervisors do not only complete second-party reviews, participate in audits that are mandated by the state. As well as having, you know, uh staff by the Sean all the time, with a security officer that needs and uh updates along those lines. So I believe this uh IMC three worker would be a great benefit to us. Um if you take a look at the uh salary breakdown, it is marked in there, um it is the last uh. Row, a row uh on there for the IMC three, this parentheses, uh quality assurance, we're requesting that that position be funded at forty-five K. I highly doubt we would actually use that entire forty-five K, however, the position is for someone with experience due to the IMC three classification. Um so they do need, they do need to have some understanding of the Food Nutrition Services Program or the Medicaid Program, one or the other. They have both, that's even better, but uh you know, beggars can't be choosers when it comes to running the area we are uh living in. And we do have a relatively uh smaller um and uh potential pool of candidates uh that are qualified. I'll say that, make make that clarity, right, they're qualified candidates. Um so again, we we do hope we would consider that. Um so my item increases, again, the big thing is what I I mentioned earlier was the document imaging project, which was descended. Uh a majority of our remaining major projects that we did have in place, um installing cameras, upgrading the technology, the changing of the replacement of our. Our lobby uh front glass, um are, were all completed this uh upcoming fiscal year. So a lot of the uh the spreading costs that we did have in our budget last year were naturally going to come off the books due to these being one-time payments. Uh along those lines, uh also, uh another thing that will be coming off the books come next fiscal year, uh is our soundside contract. We've currently been in a contract with the Soundside Group for IT Services, um and that has been since. State fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three? Eleven, yeah, I think that's when we started with Soundside. Um that's been running, that's about forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Um had had conversations with uh Mr. Pierce, our IT director, last year and this year, we finally had a position where he feels comfortable enough. To bring this under his portfolio with the county, so that's another forty-seven thousand that will be uh removed off the books come next fiscal year. Um but just throwing that out there as something to be aware of as it relates to um the budget this year and looking forward to next year. I try and do my best to be mindful of uh thinking strategically and making the puzzle pieces make sense. When it comes to not having to one, ask for anything from the county as regards to additional funds, and then work within the confines of what I already have. And hopefully, um Mr. Sauer and uh Mr. Wilson can advocate to that on my behalf as well. Moving forward, just to comment briefly on a couple of challenges and needs. Um some of our current challenge, pending current pending challenges are uh the lack of staff to support the multiple duties, I commented earlier, we don't have staff that oversee multiple programs. Um for instance, we do have a food nutrition services worker that does FNS as well as childcare. Um we have uh social workers that do oversee work first uh as well. Um the same goes with adult Medicaid and special assistance, we do have staff that oversee programs, uh finance as well as security matters, with the Charlotte here, Mrs. Hale. Um so again, those are some of the challenges we are over trying to overcome, again, part of that is at making the ask for that IMC, it's those salary increases. In order to support staff and letting them know that they are warranted or valued and we do care and appreciate. Um again, the lack of resources, this goes to an overall issue that's very much outside of our control, um in regards to being able to support our community. Um there aren't but so many resources in county that we can uh leverage, so uh it makes it very much. Uh makes it very difficult to keep things in county, and I'm talking specifically from the social work side, where a lot of the resources our staff have to use are outside of the county. Um potential funding gaps, um again, Medicaid cuts, as you're aware, on the federal level, and even the uh state level, I believe, a bill was submitted for consideration on a state level. That was a work uh work requirement for Medicaid, but that does play into this as well, and that is something that's being worked on at the federal level. Um if these end up getting passed both on the federal and state level, it could result in more work uh for our caseworkers. Uh which means if we're not properly staffed, they may become overworked, uh maybe clerical errors, which could potentially uh cost the county money. Um also, uh with that funding, uh the work requirement, um that could be an increase in cases. Uh the lack of Medicaid funds, if they end up moving forward with cancel Medicaid or cutting it, um that in turn will affect the county from a valid point of view, regards to how much they would be reimbursed. Um because the feds would then in turn not recover those costs that would naturally be on their end. Um lastly, tech- technology challenges that our offices are trying to overcome, again, uh when I first came into the office, uh we've had some, you know. Outdated computers, outdated servers, and anything, we've slowly but surely been bringing our office into the technological age, and updating our cameras. Uh at least putting a little display board in our lobby, those kind of things, that could matter a lot, what I think we're trying to communicate and advocate. For our community members, as well as allowing them to apply for services online, either in paper or digitally with a computer that's available for public access. Uh but again, we're still trying to move forward, part of that is like trying to digitize our doc, our file, and that's one of our big hurdles that we're trying to work on, but again. Uh it's it's one of those things I think we're gonna have to put on the back burner for now, just for the sake of, we bore some higher priority items on it. Uh the potential impact that could come from the uh lack of proving what our requests are, um again, the lower reimbursement amount, uh we get paid based on how much work we do. If there's enough work available, that means you guys are paying us, and in turn, you're getting more money back. Uh potential for turnover, uh Mr. Sauer, I know you can recall when we first met our staff. Uh, potential for turnover, uh, Mrs. Sauer, if you, I know you can recall when we first, uh, met our staff, you met our staff. And we had that not so uh nice conversation with our social workers when it was only uh two of them there. And uh, they were working their butts off a bit of mild, we almost will go on now. So again, we do have those issues here. Part of that goes into, oh, I can go to a member of the county, do less work, get more money. It just sounds like happened for a lot of. Um, I try and combat that by trying to cultivate a culture in the office that is supportive and uh allows them the opportunity and the autonomy to uh be themselves and be comfortable and and know sometimes I may not be able to give them the money that they want, at least they know at least trying to advocate for them and support them in whatever way, shape, form um is possible. Uh, again, the failure, a potential uh impact of uh shortfalls is a failure to meet the MOU standards. Again, this could result in cap, as I was explaining, every two to three years. Uh, we have to sign a memorandum of, of understanding with the state, uh, ensuring that we comply and meet those key performance indicators. Um, the downside of that is no matter what is happening in the state of North Carolina, it could, the world can be about to end and that probably the only exception is that, you know, we're gonna end, but we're still mandated to meet those measures regardless of what's going on. Her name come here right now. If, if they're not going to waive, um, submit a bill to have us waived and not, you know, those uh MOU standards be applied to us, those are probably the only ways we're gonna get away from not so, you know, meeting those measures. So an example, this is the Medicaid expansion. A lot of the larger counties, if you're aware, if you've seen these articles where they had backlogs on backlogs of cases that haven't been processed with people that are in need. Uh, you know, with the Medicaid expansion, they're still mandated to meet those MOU measurements regardless of the increase in influx of cases, you know, they're trying to help you out with giving you some more money. However, it's still your responsibility to do that task. Uh, during the COVID uh pandemic, a lot of those MOU requirements were placed on a moratorium. So this upcoming fiscal year is, it's when they're actually about to start implementing those. If you, for instance, have failed an audit three months in a row or four times, or less than four times in a year, you may get placed on a corrective action plan, things like that. That could eventually uh impact the county law. Uh, uh, also the potential for unmet community needs. Um, I'll talk about this again briefly on the backend as far as some of the accomplishments that we have had here. Um, we've done a good job partnering with some of our community resources here in the county and outside of the county, like GEMS and the Arboral Food Bank and the United Way in order to uh, as I like to say, bring the well to the people, allow them to drink here instead of having to go out of the county, um, in an effort to find whatever is necessary for the uh, the food bank and GEMS to provide open choice boxes for new clients who are in need or any member of the community that wants to come to our office and maybe needs a bite to eat. Uh, we partner with them, giving out maybe over a hundred twenty plus boxes since we started that about a year and a half ago. Um, in addition to United Way, we have that Community Care Collaborative, which is another avenue where we are out of funds per se for our LEAP or crisis programs, which we are out of funds for LEAP ironically right now and not everyone's gonna get approved, not everyone qualifies for crisis. Um, you know, we have another avenue that could be uh assistance for people who are in emergency need through that partnership with the United Way. Um, so again, the potential impacts of the shortfalls could be due to us now having to focus more on current tasks due to the lack of funds received um in an effort to uh provide for the community. Um, almost done here, you know, asked questions, I have to answer those. Um, wanted briefly to talk about the return on investment in community impact as it relates to the economic benefits. Um, the last report that is available on the North Carolina DCHS website is from state fiscal year uh twenty-twenty-two, which reflected that over five million Medicaid dollars were spent in Gates County, a little over three million was spent on the skilled nurse facilities here in the county, just to give you an idea of the impact um Medicaid does have locally on the county. Um, in addition, the food nutrition dollars as of April twenty-twenty-five, over two million dollars in EBT benefits have been provided to Gates County residents. I can't accurately, it's uh state how much is actually spent in county. That is a whole other report that is insanely detailed. I had to do that report one time for Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Reddick when they were on board. Uh, and if I recall back from that time, and if anyone wants to see that, I broke down everything for that. A majority of the expenses for EBT benefits recipients were uh only tracked through online purchases. So it makes it even that much harder, um, since a lot of the uh, the establishments in the county aren't, you know, allowed for online purchases. So it makes it very, very difficult to accurately uh toll for that. But to give you an accurate, general idea of how much money is given to Gates County residents uh since April twenty-twenty-five with this current fiscal year, a little over two million dollars. Um, also county reimbursement, uh, we naturally estimate that to usually be between fifty-six and sixty-five percent. Again, that all goes towards how staff are coding, the work they're doing. Um, so it, it, it fluctuates. Um, then the indirect cost that supports other county departments through our reimbursement. Um, there is a cost allocation plan that the county does uh every year. I'm not sure of the timing of that, but it's every year in the most recent one, uh, Mr. Robson can attest to as well. But uh, majority of the com, uh, departments that do do work with ESS, whether it's the sheriffs, park, janitors, buildings and grounds, they do get reimbursed for the work they do here at our county. Um, so I just wanna make sure that, make that very, very clear. We are the only department, maybe people that get grants, but uh, I highly doubt they're getting a whole lot of money that's getting reimbursed, paid back to the county life department, social services. Um, and again, I just wanna make that clear. Also, I did some digging and some data pulls in regards to our budget here. Um, since state fiscal year twenty-twenty, the average budget for our apartment was around one point seven million dollars of that on average. The county was reimbursed a little over one point one two million dollars. It's about a sixty-two percent average reimbursement rate again. Uh, I, as I said in the letter, please don't get uh carved in the sticker shop of when we make these ads. Cause again, the county literally barely is actually spending that much when it's all said and done. Um, and I'm pretty sure uh Mr. Robson versus Sauer can provide some additional clarity on that when you all do need to speak. Uh, lastly, uh, going back to this return on investment to community impact, that what we've done with the funds that you all do support us with on a regular basis annually. Uh, we have increased available resources through partnership, technology and events. Again, most of you all have available community baby shower events we've done, diabetes screening we've done through partnerships with EBMS. Um, the Arboral Food Bank, we partnered with them with uh the Healthy Choice Boxes. We are currently working with them on Mobile Food Pantry Event. However, that's kind of on in limbo due to the uh stuff going on at the federal level with um programs and departments being cut. Um, again, we do have the United uh Way Community Care Collaborative that provides emergency funds for people in need. Um, the family friendly, uh, family friendly dental van, if you're aware of that, we do host that at least twice a year for uh Medicaid recipients who are in need of dental services. We don't have a dentist in the county. So we try and again, bring the well here to the people and not just have people going out everywhere else for the services. And lastly, uh, again, the, the, the money you all gives us, give us, gives us a seat at the table. What I mean by that is that it gives our staff the uh, from a salary standpoint, the investment and support that they know the county supports and that the director supports. And so what I make ask of them to, hey, when you find sitting on this uh, this board, this task force, they're more willing and supported to do it, you know, when they're, they, they know they're being supported accurately and appropriately. Again, myself, um, I sit on numerous boards or work groups, both at the state, uh, state level and locally here in the county. Um, I just gotta ask to be a part of Salvation Army Advisory Board. I've worked with Arboral Food Bank on their board, north, Northeastern Trillion Advisory Board, I can say boards, after wards, after boards, after boards, again, uh, because of what you all do in regards to allowing me that ability to uh support the community as a whole. Um, outside of that, I will briefly, again, comment on uh the salary spreadsheet uh and that second page that just reflects what the uh potential estimates for reimbursements may be. Uh, if you see it's broken down based on the program unit and the administration here at our office, ESS and breaks them, the average estimate of what the reimbursement is, for instance, Medicaid is normally at a seventy-five, twenty-five percent reimbursement. FNS is at a fifty percent and uh protective services is at a forty-five percent and administration is at fifty percent. So again, these numbers give you a general overview of what the potential reimbursement is back to the county and what that county portion that they would be actually truly uh expanding would be. Um, again, I do thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Um, I know imagine there's a million one question, silence is golden, but I highly doubt that uh in this instance. But again, I will uh stop talking now, uh, since I've got a real amount and then open the floor for any questions.
Yeah, I got a few.
Yes.
All right, so let me just start again. Pay for granted, uh, value very much what she do. People sometimes think, we ask her questions sometimes, like only a part of us, not the case here. Trying to do due diligence.
Right, I understand.
So you talked about this salary something, just give a bit of the other folks um, come in asking about salaries and I'm just curious, it seems like everybody's been asking for five percent. I'm just wondering, that seems like a magic number this year, everybody's saying five percent. Um, so just wondered if that, that came from somewhere specific or?
So we would normally, um, bear, you know, I would always ask five percent. That's just my rule though. I'm always one of those individuals that I will request for the five percent cola or, or the cola, whichever is greater. Uh, we didn't get.
And it's funny to know if there was some order, some recommendation you told to ask. Um, and secondly, it said for salaries, you talk about um being competitive, it's tough to keep people, small county.
We are.
But some others have come in and showed us what their neighboring counties are making for similar things. You don't seem to have, is that something you can provide and have shows that pay for women's is paying their caseworkers this?
So I do have that information, I've provided that in previous uh years where I have a mission provided.
To me, that means this whole lot, because if you're asking to pay a significant increase, it's good to see that, yeah, everybody around us potentially lose people. I think that would be helpful.
You know, a, a five percent compared to one percent is barely uh respectfully uh twenty dollar probably to your check increase compared to that, but I understand.
And the pay increases to me are much more palatable if you show that they are paid compared to somebody else anyway. And that's the strong.
Definitely.
Then the new position, um, I understand what you're saying here, you're showing some significant, it looks like increases of, of a number of cases and instances of interaction. But I mean, you have something that shows workload wise, you're saying, hey, I want this new position, it shows some increases, but I guess uh well, if you're gonna add a position, you're saying, I want another body, I'm saying.
So this is.
Some says, here's the workload that they may either are taking from somebody else.
So this is, this is where the issue's coming with the state and the lack of correction and guidance, various workload standards. So that is on the MOU work group that I'm a part of, that's what we're working with, advocating for with them. So it's kind of hard to provide that level of workload analysis that you're asking for. I understand it, it would help with, hey, if the state gives us, it's five hundred uh cases per worker, which is what we're averaging on Medicaid, give or take uh fifty percent. Um, there is no guidance there from the state, so every county is stuck up to determining what that is gonna be. So you have to, how would I say this? Uh, be mindful of when our staff truly overworked. And again, this is why we haven't requested any positions over this time.
Position management boards at a lot of different places. And for me, you come in and ask, I've never been to a place where people don't want more bodies in one way. It's always the case and I understand why generally they're but in the case where you're gonna ask for me buying, usually say, hey, here's the task that they're taking and doing that other people aren't doing. Or my people, I currently have forty-two people and they're working on average twenty percent overtime. Now right there, it says, well, ten people are twenty percent overtime, that's five bodies this person needs. Anything like that is backup helps when trying to address the same.
I'm not sure, I say, I don't, I'm not sure if there's data available that was like that, maybe day sheet coding, but even that, I'm not sure if it reflects in a way that would make sense.
I guess what I'm saying is without any evidence is hard for me.
No, I understand that. I definitely understand. I'm trying to think of a way that we would be able to capture it in a way that would make sense to advocate for our argument that you're, you know what I mean? So just.
I've had people come in saying before, hey, I have thirty-two people, I have three supervisors, I mean, this person's supervising twelve persons each, that's too much. And they've said, hey, the national standard is five to six.
So yeah, and you know, every, yeah, again, this is where you're going to, where, where at the behest of the state as far as what they decide they wanna do, what information they wanna provide us. So there's no workload, case load standard for us to abide by. Everyone's basically the wild, wild west from that, from that standpoint. So, yeah.
As far as, uh, you're talking about workload, but this person, second party reviews, that means that from food stamps all the way to Medicaid, um, this worker will be reviewing these cases. Currently, that's on supervisors, which, you know, you think all the increase in cases that Medicaid has had, she and, and allocating cases and things like that, it puts her um, or actually with them, Phyllis and Sheila, I mean, Sheila and Tracy, because they both do multiple programs and it makes it difficult for them to be able to do these second party reviews. And technically, I think I've heard that supervisors like shouldn't be doing second party reviews, but we don't have a choice at this point. Also, I'll advocate for myself in this situation. I'm supposed to have a backup. I don't have a backup. Um, if I go out, there's no one there to do my monthly fifteen, seventy-one, so the county doesn't get their money back. Um, and it's hard to pull a current worker. We go with the multiple uh email issues again, the multiple programs. This person would only need one of all of access, just like I do. Uh, but mainly it's for the second party reviews. Um, and that helps ensure that the applications are done correctly. There's no errors, nothing has been overlooked. Um, so you're looking at that person potentially can touch every case in that office. So that's how many.
Everything you described sounds good. I guess. Okay, look, hey, you currently are having to review forty with second look or whatever you call it, a second look. It's about having to review forty, I shouldn't be doing more than ten, or I started off doing ten, ten years ago, now I'm doing forty. Or if the state comes to us today, you should only be in a, uh, in a social services department, you should only have one person supervising five people, anything like that. But to be honest, it's just kind of tough to say, yeah, we need a body and it's really busy. It's, it's, it's much easier if you have some kind of summary, here's how it impacts internally very specifically. That's something I can stand up and deal with very shortly.
It's more so about being able to measure it forward.
Some, some type of, something that you can sink your teeth into, people can understand from an external perspective, other than y'all seem busy, y'all work your butts off inside. And like I said, I've had many times where people come and say, I've got people working twenty hours of overtime a month, or twenty hours of overtime a week. And when they start showing that, it's easy to say, they absolutely need another body in there because they're being forced to work that much every time. Something that helps justify it. Um, I'm trying to put you in a spot so much.
For instance, the Rita audit, that's like a what, ten month audit?
Well, what he's, what he's asking for is more data to.
Right. Well, there's a, there's a Rita audit that we, we actually had two back to back and they're ten months long, which that meant our Medicaid supervisor tried to do the audit and they give you a list of all the cases you have to go in, it's a ridiculous amount of cases. So that could be one of those, oh, here's the audit that we just, you know, and you don't ever know.
So if you do an audit, is it ever new you do?
No, they raise them and say, okay, it's your.
So there's about three or four different audits that are done. And you have your monthly CQI uh overviews that come with the state that uh supervisors and staff have participated in, whether it be on cases monthly, like they go the second party, second level, second party review from the state, but which basically is what I'm talking about, that makes sure we're compliant with MOU standards. Um, that. Yeah, but then along with what she's explaining in reference to the time it takes to do those things, our supervisors can be better served working with new hired attorneys or overseeing their current reports, making sure the staff are, are timely in what they're doing, informing them of certain reports they need to touch, in cases they need to touch, if that, that makes sense. But again, so I think it's still more about the number you're talking.
I'm saying, and another part too is, is everything you say might make logical sense in incremental pieces. But I guess I'm asking you to, is there a way to put this together in a summary that says, here is why this is necessary? Because I've seen here in pieces of it, but it's not nearly enough for me to understand how the office.
Another, only other way I can try to explain it is like you were saying earlier about other larger counties, they have, for instance, Medicaid. You have someone that would only do uh special assistance, a supervisor for only special assistance, a supervisor for adult Medicaid, a supervisor for family and children's. Tracy does supervisor for all of those because of the size of the county. So therefore, it's hard to do those numbers because each. Because each audit could be for a specific program, and a larger county would have a supervisor to only do that audit. For those particular.
In your mountain lots of justifications. But I guess what I'm saying is, somewhere along the way, there was the straw that broke the camel's back. Okay, you might have had people being pushed over, worked there, and at some point you reached the limit where, God, I gotta have another person. And your descriptions already done all these work and things that are being done, but it's hard for me to understand, okay, at what point did we go past the tipping point where? Clearly you need another body, or did the state come in and mandate something, I'm hearing you say we need another body.
Medicaid expansion did that.
Which, which did, yeah, increased the load significantly, and I would say that at the state level, it's significantly increased the state load in the past, what, two years it's been?
Transitioning on to, you referred to MOU standards. What are those, I mean, I hear you saying, oh, you only.
So each pro, each program, uh FNS, Medicaid, uh child care services, energy programs. Child support, there are give or take five to seven metrics that each county has to read.
What are, what are some of those?
Uh I use child support since I was the, ran my canco originally. Um your child support cases under order, your paternity is established. Uh your payments on arrears, again, those are some of them that if you're hitting eighty percent, the state manages to hit eighty percent.
So what's, what's being on this, so eighty percent of what?
Eighty percent of cases, no, of cases with a support under order, child support. So, you know, an example of that for FNS would be timeliness of applications process. Uh or re, timeliness of recertification process, same thing for Medicaid.
So basically, if you got to get that off, then?
Um we also have, um, services in the MOE twenty. That, that number hasn't changed since the nineteen, like I think they said nineteen eighty-five.
Maintenance of effort is basically you have to do so much, I guess.
Count, it has to be so much, so many county dollars before federal kicks in. And ours is like a hundred and five thousand, we don't always meet it because of the caseload. Um and what could happen, and it hasn't happened, I guess because we're a smaller county, if we don't meet that MOE, we could lose federal dollars. And if we spend the federal dollars, they can take it back.
Something I'm gonna go back on, kind of talking about, talking about audits and stuff, to have. The, the, a difficulty that happens with our offices, small offices, especially, is that literally one case can fail us. If we can, ten cases or however many, one case can be the ruin of our office. We can go a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, all in all, it'd be one month. Uh we got two cases wrong, congratulations, you're on captain, or you know, things like that, it's, it's that delicate for an office of our size. Due to the fact that they review the amount of cases based on your caseload size. So if, for instance, our protective services union, uh they may not have as many active cases, so the state may only review five. But they're supposed to review ten, but we only have five active cases at that time, or work first would be an example of that as well. Um and so they will do five out of those ten cases, and if one, if there's one error in one of them, it gives potential result in us being placed on a corrective action.
No, no, it was all one, it feels.
So usually you get a cap or something, that's probably a case where they get nine days to get back and they come once or something?
Uh just depends, we haven't, when kid, when I first started, when kids, we had to pay back then.
That's special assistance, I don't, I don't recall.
Um but it, it varies. Um I think there, there are more severe penalties in the protective services world for obvious reasons. Compared to our FNS and Medicaid programs when it comes to cap, you know, uh but uh. It, it, it's gonna vary based on the severity, what is the error. Um if it actually ended up costing the state money, um those kind of things, but normally it'll be a, hey. Ninety days to rectify it and then provide us with a plan and how you're gonna stop this from happening. These are the kind of things in addition that that worker would help out with as well.
Last one, talking to you about unmet needs of the community, this will be my last one. So give me some examples of unmet needs, because that's a good generalized thing, I can say that for utilities, still, I think unmet needs.
It's literally what I was discussing earlier about bringing the wealth to the people here in the county, and. The food bank is only open so much, maybe every other, I don't know how often Gem's schedule is, or if there's any other entities out here. Again, you know, uh we work with our own food bank and gems on occasion to receive health and choice boxes, things like that. The host of the community uh baby shower that, you know, that didn't cost the county anything. So us, our staff busting their butt to try and provide opportunities and resources. It's things like how we're trying to plan for community behavior right now. It's working with our partners and local other uh resources here, stakeholders, to try and push the, push the needs and be more than just. The people that take the kids, you know what I mean, and those kind of uh misconceived perceptions that people have of us. And that's what I mean when I'm talking about the unmet community, and he's trying to be an additional resource. Oh, you don't know, you know, you have got a diabetes friend, come to our office, we're holding one today, you know. Oh, you need some food, come on by, we'll get you a box, you don't even have to receive any benefits, you're having a hard time, no problem. Oh, you don't, you don't qualify for uh LEED, the low, low income energy assistance program, where you don't qualify for crisis. Well, look, we partner with United Way, you know, reach out to them, we put uh uh above out to our contact there, Mr. Robles. Apply there, they may be able to help you, again, it's like trying to fill in that gray area in the gaps that I see here in the county. Is one of the parts you about those unmet, it's like, again, who help along those lines?
Yep, okay.
You sure you're good?
I'm gonna stop.
So gracious, thank you.
I, I do feel what y'all do too, and I appreciate what you do, the, the community baby shower is really cool, neat things, I, I know a lot of. People who went on Fed, I can say, and I wanted to move back to the Almiron's legislative day, and honestly, it's incredible to. So I'm not more discount that, I'm just trying to do the due diligence here.
I respect what you do, Commissioner, of course, that's my understanding, so I don't take you.
I know you're on DSS boards, but you're probably fairly up to date on this. Okay, um, I mean, I don't, I don't have much then. It's hard to do with DSS, I understand that, it's an alphabet, I appreciate it.
You might explain on your own chair, under child support, you all contract out for that.
Yes, we do.
Some families try to staff for that, that's a real.
Yeah, so I, I will comment, I, I had that question previously about why do we contract? And coming from the child support side, I did come from the private side with a, a competitor company from uh Young Williams that. Don't think they're in the county or the state no more, that's the difference there. Um but the issue that comes about with why a small county like ours, I would side against us. Going and keeping it in-house is just due to the fact that we have a small caseload. It's the issue we kind of had with work first, is that why we have a part-time field, it's very, very small caseload. So the issue that's gonna come about with that is, is it justified to keep it in-house when it's just that one person doing it? They're gonna need to be supervised.
Backup.
Backup, literally, yeah, it, it's just not worth it for us, and I hate to say it, you know, I'm saying on record, I've said it to all in the tanning. Uh with, with Young Williams, and I envy their setup they have here in the northeastern part of the state. Um as it relates to child support, because they have a pseudo uh consortium with. Numerous uh county DSS offices here in the, in the, in the area, neighboring counties. And run them out of the legislative city office, so we do have them come to our office once a month. Um we are starting the first option year of that agreement. Uh and I think those be three options that come up year over year, and they do great work, so I have no regrets with them. Um so yeah, other than that, I mean, you know, we have the center side contract coming off the books, Young Williams is still on the line right now.
Yeah, I did think. Well, actually, it's not so much, well, there's a question. So I recall, that's been around for years, that's, I mean, the document scanning thing. Wasn't that one approved several years ago?
For, for our, that was just approved last year.
Really?
Yeah, that, yeah, it was last year.
So why aren't y'all going to with that, I, I had personal experience with that, it's, it's always that hard.
Yeah, so the issue that came about is we had issues with the uh language in the agreement regarding arbitration. So my background is a law group, so in conjunction with our attorney. We had issues with some of the arbitration language in their, in the grant, and was requesting it be changed. And provided our reasoning, and they said they would get with their legal, that was um. Yeah, July or August, and I didn't hear back from them until maybe like the start of the year. And I'm a big person on doing good business, so I do think that's a little inappropriate to not communicate, coming to find out they've gotten hurt in business. Uh the ownership, and we were one of those uh, you know, things that gets lost to the wayside, so I bet if we were met on a bird call.
So you can say you're rescinded, or are you saying you're not gonna do it?
Well, we are, and what we're, what we would like to do is try and avoid having to spend that kind of money. And keep things in-house and have staff do uh uh scanning to approve comp time. In turn, that would allow us to just use the um the state system and see faster than the case management system. And give us an opportunity to start uh cleaning up our records, because we do have some.
Honestly, I would really like that, we, we did that very thing, I remember scanning, god. In nineteen ninety-six, we started by scanning documents, and it was probably your wall this size, top to bottom documents. And it was two of us, we started ninety-six, and I left that job to move overseas, in two thousand and two, we were just completed. It was two of us, because we did it besides our comp time job. That's what I'm saying, it's still small, it, it easily can be done, we, we had skills where we do a lot more and know much, but we will get some things, we didn't get so much time. But we had to set ourselves a timeline, and we were two years past our target date, so, I like that idea, but man, you gotta make sure you stay on top of that.
What you're saying, so that, that goes into, and this is a general uh comment about, and maybe that's kind of just for myself and Will. Mr. Robertson, to have without just comp time and this accruals in these kind of instances, we've had issues in the past with certain staff overly accruing comp time. And we have to force them on vacations, you know, so we gotta uh work that down. And so the other option, I, I maybe would like seeing that may, maybe would be the kind of, the middle would be maybe to. Pay them specifically for, you know, like an entry level rate, less than what they make for the normal task, just to come in on weekends. To do that compared to.
I hired two East County high school graduates, temporary summer hire, when summer they did, they were phenomenal.
So the issue with that with us is just. Yeah, FTI and those things.
We had some place back by the state, couldn't touch it.
And if you ever took a look at our uh file room, and again, real quick, I do welcome uh some of our newer commissioners and meet our staff, maybe have a sit-down with them, to meet the known Victor Bres. Yeah, I, I mean, yeah.
Sorry, you stand right down, Joe. Seven eleven total, Ben, oh my god, this, this, what do you call them, vault or something?
Yeah, it's a, it's a vault, all right, but uh, you know, I, I, I always welcome the opportunity for you guys to come and meet some of the staff. And talk with them and hear some of their thoughts or concerns and whatnot. Um but uh the.
Hiring people.
They, uh, yeah, the issue we have is with the, the FTI, sensitive information, and if you look at our room, just to sort through what is and what isn't that? Would, would be a pain, painstaking task, and it's self-inorder for them just to, you know, file some high school kids are filing, you know. Trying to figure out what would make sense, I think we would probably save money if we did, you know, uh. Did a rotation on staff, or maybe like four or five, we had to break that, I didn't break with, because I didn't plan on going this route. Uh we're going, but you know, if we hired, we brought in two to three staff, two to four staff on a weekend. And paid them like thirteen bucks an hour or whatever, have you, probably in the long run, maybe cost us as much as that forty-seven K a year? Give or take, but again, those are conversations I can have with Will.
Can y'all set up a separate line item that deals with specific line item?
I don't think that would be, that would be an issue.
Oh, yeah, then it's easy to balance, I shared with Republic, hey, we're making smart decisions, definitely, and typically, sometimes we'd like to load, kind of make a little extra money. So it's, it's a win-win for them.
Right, that was our point, that was our thoughts when you originally were discussing it, just about, we had that conversation a month ago, and budget stuff.
What are you gonna do about the six hundred dollar threshold? We're not running the payroll.
Yeah, that's the other side, and that's part of it, you, you have to let me know that, what we can and can't do, that is, oh, who's having the idea, and you're just like, no.
Yeah, you know me.
Talk, talk, talk about my daddy down there right here.
Well, I mean, you can't, by personnel, you can't pay comp time, you can't.
I was wondering about that, I was thinking, cause I know it's not OT, because your comp time, it's not paid out, so that, that.
So you can't.
You do the way that made up there, we don't pay out OT, it gets paused at comp time.
Always?
Always.
Across the board, in many ways.
Really?
Other than sheriffs, is it not, remember his name?
Who doesn't get paid?
I mean, I've been this sheriff, but that, I don't think they. I was about to make that term, but if you go.
We, we actually always had, and I know you, I'm, you're quite tired, and this guy tells about everything he's done for, but. We always had it set up to where you had the supervisory discretion to be looking towards comp time or overtime, but comp time could only ever get to, I think it was like. Equivalent of four weeks before you had to start paying them automatically, because they couldn't go up more, because then you started losing them during critical time. That's that.
But then that always comes back to the county, when I've understood, budget and different.
One thing to talk about was that we do have a level of comp time, and there is a suggestion that if you reach a certain level, it's up to the supervisor to start trying to make a decision. But if you do go over that comp time, we require a gap.
Fifty thousand dollar line item that you're working against each year, I mean.
I mean, the way to, to wait to get around that would be to pay them for accounts payable, but again, if you do that, you're not gonna be taking social security. So you're really gonna wanna keep them under the six hundred dollar.
Yeah, that's.
Which isn't enough.
So that's not gonna work for the left, the amount of work you're talking to. So I.
This conversation was gonna happen, which is what I'm saying, hey, I have this idea, and I think we had a brief conversation about it, you know, we didn't, I was like, let me get all my data.
Yeah, we, we kind of touched on it a little bit, but this is always what we go through, we're trying to figure out what to do. How to utilize. This is kind of in this little election, when you have multiple things, problems there, when people face one way versus the other.
Yes, one other uh thing I will comment on, is we're, we're talking about the comp time and the issue that comes about with our social workers. Compared to neighboring counties that do pay out uh on-call days, that is really what it comes down to. And how uh on-call days are done, most counties make you a hundred dollars uh per meeting on call. Uh and they get paid that out, we don't, we just approve comp time, and I think it's just two hundred.
That, that really needs to be addressed.
Four hours instead of, you know.
The home call.
Yeah, yeah, they only get paid four hours of comp time when potentially they could be out in the field for.
Well, but they're supposed to put that time in.
But just, just then, just to put it out there for the commissioners to be aware of and just to consider, but.
My guess right now, I, I get eight hours of pay while they're carrying the phone, if they get cold, have they, they get paid back for those hours as well. And it seems to be okay.
Again, thank you all again, uh I'm gonna go take the rest of the day off.